Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Boulder City Council meeting for June 4th, 2019. Lynette, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Brockett.
Present.
Carlisle.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Morzell.
Here.
Nagel.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gates.
Here.
Young.
Present.
We have quorum.
Excellent. Few announcements before we get to the beginning of our program. One is, I feel like I say this every meeting, but we're still recruiting for a few boards and commissions appointments, and we just want to highlight that this is a great way to get engaged in the community. And the three boards that we are currently recruiting for are two that have to do with Boulder Junction access district, both the Parking Commission and the Travel Demand Management Commission, and then the University Hill Commercial Area Management Commission. All three of these seats require the applicant to either be a property owner or a resident with permission to represent a property owner's interests inside the district. So if that fits you and you want to get involved, you just need to be 18 years of age and have lived within the city limits of Boulder for a year unless you are the one representing a property owner's interests and have permission to do that. Okay. And with that, we need to amend the agenda. We want to, here's the proposal to council. One is to remove the Hogan-Pancas designation discussion and move that to July 16th. The other is to reduce, since when have we put this on? Anyhow, we're going to try to spend 90 minutes or less on the Alpine-Balsam area plan and then add a little more time to the CU South Process Committee update. And then we want to add a small item, which is whether or not we want to sign on to the letter to Bureau of Land Management about coal leasing.
So moved.
So moved. Any discussion by council? All those in favor of amending the agenda? It's unanimous? Excellent. And with that, we are going to turn to two declarations to start our meeting off, and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Sam Weaver. I will note that, oh, four of the council members dressed appropriate colors. And the rest of us forgot. Sorry.
Check. Can you hear me? No, I don't think it's on. Okay, so I would like to call up Nicole Leah Broughton, who's the Boulder Chapter Lead for Moms Demand Action. So we will do a declaration shortly about gun violence, and I have a few remarks I'd like to deliver. Gun violence is a scourge and a sickness that infects America and harms the psyche of its residents. As a gun owner myself, I know that firearms can be possessed and handled by responsible adults in a manner that serves society and individual needs. However, firearms designed solely for killing human beings or tools that serve only to enhance the lethality of legal weapons are abhorrent and serve only to create fear and death in our society. To raise awareness of the destruction caused by the misuse of these tools of human devastation, the City Council of the City of Boulder will shortly issue a declaration regarding gun violence. Before I read that declaration, I would like to honor the memory of those who were lost to incidents of mass gun violence and wish peace to those who have survived these incidents. Some mass gun violence incidents in the last 20 years, which have caused destruction and death in our national communities, include the Las Vegas shooting of 2017, 58 killed and 422 injured by gunfire; the Orlando nightclub shooting of 2016, 49 killed and 53 injured; the Virginia Tech shooting of 2007, 32 killed, 23 injured; the Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting of 2012, 27 killed and two injured; the Sutherland Springs Church shooting of 2017, 26 killed and 20 injured; the Stoneman Douglas High School shooting in 2018, 17 killed and 17 injured; the San Bernardino shooting of 2015, 14 killed and 24 injured; the Fort Hood shooting of 2009, 14 killed and 32 injured; and close to home here in Colorado, the Columbine High School shooting of 1999, 13 killed and 24 injured; the Aurora Theater shooting in 2012, 12 killed and 70 injured. And on April 29th of this year, Kendrick Castillo, a student at the STEM School in Highlands Ranch, was killed for protecting other students from one of two gunmen firing at that school. Eight other students were wounded. And within this last week, the tragic shootings in Virginia Beach killed 12 people and injured six. As a society and within the city of Boulder, we must work to eliminate this senseless cause of death in our communities. And now I'll read the declaration. Every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence and countless others are injured. Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. Support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding residents goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. City council and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their residents safe. In January 2013, Hadia Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, was tragically shot and killed just weeks later. To help honor Hadia and the 100 Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 7th, 2019, as the Fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. The City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado declares June 7th National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourage all residents to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effect of gun violence.
So as Sam said, my name is Nicole, and I'm part of the Boulder Moms Demand Action Chapter Leadership Team. Every day, more than 90 Americans are shot and killed, with hundreds more injured by gun violence. Our hearts go out to those whose loved ones' lives were tragically cut short. Moms Demand Action is here to stand against gun violence in all of its forms. We are part of the gun violence prevention movement. We support the Second Amendment and know it goes hand in hand with common sense gun laws and a culture of gun safety. We are not anti-gun. We are anti-gun violence and pro-gun safety. We are working to create a movement that is inclusive of gun owners and non-owners alike. Our work is to raise awareness regarding the facts of gun violence and to keep guns out of the hands of felons, domestic abusers, and people with dangerous mental health conditions. I want to thank the entire Boulder City Council for their support and declaration of National Gun Violence Prevention Day. This is a step towards recognizing the tragic effects of gun violence in our communities and raising awareness for the victims. Colorado knows all too well what happens when a gun gets in the hands of someone who is not able to be responsible with the weapon. Too many promising lives are lost to gun violence. And while mass shootings make up the headlines, tragically, 2/3 of gun deaths are by suicide. Those who die by suicide and their families are victims, too. Colorado ranks ninth in the country with regard to the suicide rate. And for Colorado's Coloradans aged 10 to 24, suicide is the leading cause of death. And what we know from research is that a suicide attempt with a gun is much more likely to be a suicide death. Gun violence is a nonpartisan issue. Death by a gun affects all demographics. All races and ages are suffering. Guns kill whether you are rich or poor. It enters rural and urban communities, and its effects are tragic and long-lasting. We must do more to address this issue so that we can unravel the tangled mess that leads to violent acts by gun. We all deserve to live free from the threat of gun violence. If you're interested in learning more about Moms Demand Action, our legislative agenda, how we support victims, or our Be Smart Gun Safety program, visit our website, MomsDemandAction.com, or you can email our chapter at bouldermomsdemandaction@gmail.com. And I want to thank City Council for wearing orange today. You may notice the bandstand will be lit orange on June 7th, and we will be at the Boulder's Farmer's Market handing out orange awareness paraphernalia, so come by and see us.
Next up, we have another declaration by Councilmember Nagle.
Is, there we go, Jose. So council is going to recognize Immigration or Immigrant Heritage Month and the Boulder Latino Festival. So generations of immigrants from every corner of the globe have built our country's economy and created the unique character of our nation. Immigrants have provided the United States with unique social and cultural influences, fundamentally enriching the extraordinary character of our nation. Immigrants have been tireless leaders, not only in securing their own rights and access to equal opportunity, but also having campaigned to create a fairer and more just society for all Americans. Immigrants have enriched Boulder beyond measure, bringing many contributions to our community along with the unique customs and traditions of their ancestral homeland. Boulder recognizes the importance of shared immigrant history, diverse cultures, and the role these play in shaping and enriching the life of the city. The City of Boulder is committed to the inclusion of immigrant communities in civic participation and public life and wishes to honor the experience and contributions of the many immigrants who have shaped the city over many generations or that facilitate the successful integration of immigrants into the civic, economic, and cultural life of the Boulder community. The City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado declares June 2019 as Immigrant Heritage Month and commends the efforts and contributions from all immigrant communities residing in the City of Boulder. City Council further encourages Boulder residents to join in the celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month at an event on June 17th, 2019, at 11:00 a.m. in front of the historic County Courthouse on Pearl Street, in which all are welcome to celebrate the contributions of immigrants.
Hello? Thank you. My name is Jose Batira, and I'm here representing Barrio E. and our partners Forward the U.S., whom helped us put this event for Monday, June 17th, together along with the Colorado Latino Festival. And will you mind holding this? This is the poster that came out fresh off the press today announcing the festival, which used to be one day, but now we have expanded it from June 17th to the 23rd, where we will be having different events in which we are celebrating immigrants, we're celebrating Latino and Caribbean history and heritage. But this is not just for us, this is for all of you, and I'm going to explain why. Before I go there, I just wanted to thank the mayor, City Council, everybody who worked on this proclamation, because this couldn't have come at a better time. Earlier today, U.S. Congress passed legislation giving a path to U.S. citizenship to over 2 million immigrants, and that includes Dreamer. And it's applause-worthy, yes. So this looks really good, hand in hand with what's going on. So I want to thank you for taking this stand, because it's a big deal. And I wanted to have you participate with me in one thing. Please raise your hand, and I'm including council in this as well, if you come from So I'm going to go a little further than this and say, we're not just celebrating immigrant heritage, we're celebrating American history. This is part of you. This is part of all of us. Unless you're a Native American, you know, we're all immigrants. We came from immigrant backgrounds one, two, three, many generations ago. But this is a big deal, and I'm very thankful for this stand, Barrio E. Forward the U.S. and all of our partners, including the city, who is a big sponsor for the Colorado Latino Festival. I am very thankful to them for taking this stand. HRC, who has always stood for the Dream Act, for passing legislation, giving a path to citizenship to many undocumented immigrants who are here to work, to look for a better life, to settle, to place roots, and to make this home as well. So thank you so much. Thank you for giving me the space to talk. I am honored to stand here and receive this on behalf of my partners and all of you, and thank you. Great day.
Thank you to both of the groups and the interests that we were just acknowledging. We are now going to turn to the part of the evening, goodbye all of you, to the part of the, the part of the meeting where we're not going to clap or boo or make noises, and we're going to create a safe space to hear lots of different opinions, okay? Just a reminder to folks, we're going to go to open comment. Just a reminder that those who are speaking tonight can speak to any matter except for the issue that's going to be subject to open, sorry, to a public hearing a little bit later, and that's the four landmark designations. So if you want to speak to those, sign up separately over there. And with that, we're going to go straight, we're going to start with Kim Bixel. If you can start with your name and address, that would be great. Each of you gets two minutes. Starting with Kim.
Hi there, I'm Kim. Those were really awesome, important declarations, so that was, that was really great to hear. So, and also thank you for hearing my comments on Alpine-Balsam. They seem less measurable than gun violence, but thank you, and thank you for serving as our city council. As I said, my name's Kim Bixel, I live on 11th Street. As a neighbor, I'm here to speak on Alpine-Balsam. And as a neighbor of Alpine-Balsam and speaking for many of my Boulder and friends and neighbors, I want Alpine-Balsam to include housing that permanently maintains the middle, that preserves neighborhood character, that is a vibrant neighborhood community. It seems that this is what everyone wants. Right, David?
Third right. Third right, Kim.
So I think at issue, it seems, is the scale and how we reach a conclusion as to what is truly feasible on the site itself. If we use the holiday neighborhood as a density model for the full, like if you just used it for the full 8.8 acre Alpine-Balsam site, we would have between about 80 and 120 total housing units. So this is a livable, sustainable, quality community and one that, that people love, right? When the city starts talking about 55-foot-high high-rise apartment buildings and 300 units on Alpine-Balsam and 304, 400 more units in the area, it seems that they begin to lose credibility by ignoring at least half of their own stated goals of respecting an existing, thriving community and a development that complements the character of a neighborhood. And they turn a deaf ear to the massive majority feedback they've, they've themselves have gathered that do not desire this kind of development at the Alpine-Balsam location for many reasons and various reasons and all valid. And so to me, it seems this is poor project management at best, and it falls into the realm of ideology over reality and reasonableness. So the marginal difference between a holiday-type, moderate, livable, workable development and high-density just feels not worth it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is that my time?
Yep.
Thank you.
No, you're fine. No more noise, guys. Don Cody, come on up.
Good evening, council. Good evening to all of you. I stand before you as the only Boulder resident who's not a water engineering specialist. I know it's a rarity, but you know, because of that, I really can't criticize anything that you've done. But I am concerned that you're getting a lot of criticism. You have flood mitigation actions were criticized by the camera. CU says you're going in the wrong direction, and even Ben Binder has criticized you for not condemning the property. You can't win. You are the leaders of the community, and you're being criticized a lot. At Frazier, and the CEO and the Board of Trustees don't believe you can make progress either. Therefore, they have built 2.8 miles of flood walls. They're already in and was trying to put in the floodgates at this time. So when the next flood happens, not if, when, we will be safe even though surrounded by a high-hazard flood area. A danger for anyone caught in it, which could be other Boulder residents. Why are we safe and other residents not? We both have intelligent, competent staffs, knowledgeable consultants. Now, we experienced the last flood, and it was devastating to our residents, and we're never going to let it happen again. Was everybody happy with the flood walls we put in? Of course not. You know, it took up some grass. It's too high. It blocks my view. All of those things are real. But you know what? We moved expeditiously to solve the problem. We listened to our experts. We did what we had to. Safety is a moral responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. We have a question. Excuse me.
Don? I have a question. Have you addressed the CU Regents regarding these same issues? Just curious, it might be helpful to have them here as well.
Okay, you can invite them, and I'd be glad to come.
They come here occasionally to Boulder.
Well, do they?
Yes, they do. I'll let you know.
Thank you. James Feeney, followed by Lynn Segal.
Hello again. I'm James Feeney from North Boulder. Two weeks ago, in response to my question about enforcement of the city's dark-sky ordinance, city manager expressed that the ordinance would not be enforced because mobile homes are located in parks owned by private property owners. However, city manager declined to answer my question, explaining the legal structure for this policy of non-enforcement, other than to say that she had checked with staff. In fact, city managers prohibited from seeking legal advice from city staff, both because city staff are in violation of Colorado Revised Statute 1393-101, which requires a counselor-at-law to be duly licensed to the practice of law in Colorado, where city staff are not so licensed, and because the City of Boulder Charter, Section 85, requires that only city attorney shall be legal advisor to city manager and to city council. So I now ask, after seven weeks to review, since first raising this question at city council meeting, is it city attorney's advice that City of Boulder ordinances, and in particular, Section 9916, the dark-sky ordinance, are unenforceable against either party to a mobile home park land lease or against the City of Boulder itself? And if so, what is city attorney's legal basis and reasoning for this opinion? I request city council to direct city attorney to answer the questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Segal, and then Kathleen Hancock.
Lynn Segal, Mountain Heights Boulder. I co-opted the shirt, Sam, because it was the brightest green I could find. The hospital building, as I said in the letter to you, went up from 17 million to 29 million bucks in value. The land went from 7 million to 7 million. I'm curious why we would consider deconstructing, well, I should say demoing, the hospital, because there is no deconstruction to these older buildings and ones like this. The pavilion, on the other hand, seemed to be okay to keep. The hospital, I agree with many in town, could use some creative architects and some ingenuity to build it into something that could work. And that might not be the density that some folks in town want, but I find that the density going on in town, as I've also written to you and after talking to the deconstruction guy, Russ, I'm sure you've heard of him, Zan, is made of glue. Everything is glue. And the present building, status of new build now, is disposable. And, and it's disposable because it's short-lived and it's entirely disposable, because you can't, it's not reuse, it's not rebuild, it's not anything. It's gone forever. And then we have a huge carbon cost of all of these buildings that are going to fall down within 100 years. They're not built like 500 years in Europe, and we need to preserve the buildings that we have. And I'm going to have to insist on that and find creative ways to reuse, repurpose the building.
Thank you, Lynn. Kathleen, and then Carla Rikkens-Rood.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Hancock. I moved to Boulder in 2009. I live in the Newlands area on 5th Street. I want to talk about the importance of neighborhoods tonight. The comprehensive plan for Boulder includes many statements about neighborhoods. For example, the city is charged with, quote, "preserving established neighborhood character", end quote. As council members, your job is to represent our collective views. This means sometimes balancing contradictory goals like more housing and preserving neighborhoods. The Alpine-Balsam project is embedded in a neighborhood, as you know. Traffic from new residents and office visitors will affect neighbors up and down Broadway and especially 9th and 4th Streets and along Balsam and Alpine on both sides of Broadway. What concerns me about Alpine-Balsam is the council seems to have forgotten about the neighborhoods. I keep hearing about housing and office buildings. What happened to balancing the needs of the city with the needs and desires of the neighborhoods? The grassroots group Think Boulder created a survey to find out what the neighbors want. The neighbors near the site will be most affected by a project gone wrong or right. They also have personal knowledge of how things work on the ground, such as traffic. Over 530 people responded, five times more than the city's own survey. They resoundingly chose low-density, about 50 new units. They're worried about views, parking, traffic, overcrowded shops, et cetera. I want to know, how are you balancing their views with those from people outside the area who want high-density development? I understand the need for trade-offs. Maybe you need to go higher than 50 units, maybe 100. I can live with that. And I welcome a mixed-use concept with permanently affordable housing and community gathering areas, but 200 or 300 new units, maybe 400 to 600 new cars, goes completely against a balance between housing and offices and preserving the neighborhood. To my fellow residents, I ask you to consider whether you want a city council that gives due respect to neighborhood engagement and preservation or a city council that prioritizes development. Your neighborhood may be next. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, and then John Carroll.
Hello, Carla Rikkens-Rood, 6th and Streamside. Last Sunday, at 4:30 p.m., the Frazier retirement community had our annual memorial service. It honors all Frazier members who passed away during the preceding 12 months. It's a somber time for our residents, their families, neighbors, and surviving partners. It's a somber time for our residents, their families, neighbors, and surviving partners. There were 25 names on the list, exactly 25 fewer than last year. Some residents think of Frazier as living on a cruise ship because of the carefree and active life that they live. Others have dubbed it "the last resort." Nevertheless, most people know they've made their final move and are here through the end. Regardless of their timing, we take our jobs at Frazier very seriously to ensure our residents are safe and secure in their homes. I want to clarify some facts that have been missing in the flood mitigation conversation. During the mid-1990s, the owners of the gravel pit gave the City of Boulder several opportunities to purchase the South Boulder property. Boulder's Director of Open Space declined to buy the land. The fourth time, the seller told the city he had another buyer lined up. The city passed on purchasing it for the fourth time, and then the property sold to CU in 1997. We are now encouraged that CDOT, CU, and Council have met and appear to be committed to progress. I hope all parties are committed to fast-tracking the plan, because each report of an historic snowpack and possible flooding reactivates PTSD at Frazier and in our neighbors. The six-year anniversary of the flood is three and a half months away. It must be noted, however, that a majority of Council acted in bad faith when you directed City Staff to pursue a flood mitigation design that had already been rejected by CU. That variant one red herring was in direct opposition to the guiding principles of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan that you signed. That diversion costs 10 months, time that will never be reclaimed.
Thank you. John, and then John Charles.
Hello, Council. My name's John Carroll. I live on Quahla Drive in the Frazier Meadows neighborhood. Thank you for your past and continued support of South Boulder Creek flood mitigation. You know, we wouldn't be here today having this conversation without your support. I'm here today to remind you that estimated 3,500 residents who are directly in harm's way the next time it floods. This won't be a few feet of water in our basement. A wall of water will overtop US 36 at foothills and come flowing through our neighborhood. Several feet of water will be in our streets, and there'll be no way for us to escape and get to higher ground, other than climb to our roofs. And hopefully, the water doesn't get that high. Flood mitigation is not a political issue for those of us in harm's way. It is an urgent, life-or-death public safety issue. Every day that goes by that flood mitigation isn't in place is another day that I have to go to sleep worrying about the safety of myself and my husband, my friends, and neighbors. When we hear talk of imminent domain, land swaps, OSMP land disposal, all we hear is that this life-saving project will be further delayed. You have three parties that are willing to work together in the city, CDOT and CU. Each party has their own goals and objectives, but there's likely a compromise that everyone can agree to that will benefit the safety of the community. I encourage you to work with CU and CDOT, understand their needs, and help them understand our needs as a community. Find that compromise that all parties can agree to, and lead the coalition to a workable solution without delay. Those of us in harm's way don't care what variant you choose. Call it variant seven, eight, 12, 23. We'll be happy with it, as long as it's a flood mitigation variant that gets built as quickly as possible and gets us out of harm's way.
Thank you, John. John Charles, and then Patrick Murphy.
You enjoying your food, Major?
Yes.
You seem to be enjoying your meal very much. I have my service animal with me because I'm required to take him with me everywhere I go. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, businesses may ask, "Is this a service animal?" Businesses may ask, "What task does the service animal perform?" Businesses may not require special identification for the animal. That means, don't ask me for ID. Don't ask me for a certificate. Don't ask me for anything to ID my service animal as a service animal. The law doesn't require it. Businesses may not ask about my disability. Businesses may not charge additional fees because of the service animal. Businesses may not refuse admittance, isolate, segregate, or treat this person less favorably than other patrons. And so, as such, I am homeless, and I try to access emergency shelter at Path to Home and the North Broadway Homeless Shelter as well. They said the same thing in both cases, that the city, because of the city, it's not us. It's not us doing this to you, mister. It's the city who enforces a no-animal policy, a no-pet policy, even in homeless shelters. I doubt that's true, but that's what they claim. They're using you to refuse admittance to me, this council, that they claim is enforcing some rule.
Thank you. Patrick, and then Clinton.
My name is Patrick Murphy. I live in Boulder. Is the muni a paper muni? No, it's a vapor muni. The muni settlement with Excel was one more loss for the muni. We never fulfilled the charter requirements to create a muni, and now that is settled. Boulder has been and will continue to be a victim of its own bad decisions based on propaganda. It's our own fault, bad decision-making by leadership. The slightly smaller half of Boulder voters, however, had it right. The muni is a waste of time and money, but here we are, stuck with the muni albatross. Stranded cost was only one of two things assumed to be zero that will never be zero. Here's the second non-zero cost you need to know about. Going concern is also considered to be zero, but will never be zero. Going concern is applied to situations where the government, Boulder, takes over a private company and not only takes all their equipment and manuals, but also takes all their customers. Although Boulder lawyers claim this has never happened in Colorado, they're wrong. It has happened in Denver, Colorado, and is almost exactly the same as Boulder's situation. Based on that, it'll cost Boulder some multiple of $120 million. That cost, added to stranded cost, will put the muni in the hole past 2033 and possibly decades beyond. Nutty, clearly. If you really claim to represent all of Boulder, you need to refer a 2019 ballot to the voters to convert the carbon tax to real carbon reduction, not the vapor muni. Let us vote. Lead us out of this boondoggle.
Thank you, Patrick. Clinton, and then Francesca Silva.
Clint Hyple, Frazier Meadows. After extensive reviews by city advisory boards, the revision of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, reviews by city staff and engineering consultants, and endless public input, you were presented with several alternative plans, all of which would have provided substantial flood protection for South Boulder. While piously declaring that your goal was to provide maximum protection, you cleverly chose the only plan which had been repeatedly and explicitly, which you had been repeatedly and explicitly told that the landowner would reject, even though they had generously agreed to donate about half their property for flood mitigation and other community purposes. While the motivation of council members for this approach cannot be determined with certainty, it appears that the actual goal is to prevent CU from building affordable housing for junior faculty and bathrooms for the tennis courts, with the lives and property of South Boulder residents being merely collateral damage. It's somewhat puzzling, in light of the city's alleged interest in affordable housing. The irony of the endless delays is that CU is unlikely to do any appreciable development for at least 10 years. And after June 20th, 2030, CU will be free to attempt to obtain water and sewer service from Louisville or Superior. And if they're successful, Boulder would have no control whatsoever over development on the property. Regrettably, while council members are unlikely to be personally liable for the lives and property likely lost in the next flood, the responsibility will be yours. The city may not be so fortunate. Having chosen to do less than nothing in face of a known threat, the city will and should face a barrage of lawsuits after the next flood.
Sir, we have a question.
I have a question for you. I have a question. So, you assert that after 2030, that CU would be able to get water from Superior Louisville? Why can't they do that today?
Because there's an intergovernmental compact which gives City of Boulder first right to annex or provide water and sewer service to CU South. It's a 30-year compact, which was agreed to 20 years ago, about, and it expires on June 30th, 2020. Now, perhaps...
Thank you. That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Francesca, and then Susan Baca.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Francesca Silva, and I live on 10th Street, near the Alpine-Balsam site. I'm very concerned with the push for adding dense housing in Boulder. One of the things that I believe makes this city special is the simple fact that it's not crowded. I realize there is a concern that 60,000 cars drive into Boulder daily, but I question the idea that building more housing will do anything but worsen this problem. You see, if we add more people to our population, we will need more services, such as schools, restaurants, and grocery stores, to handle the additional people, which will lead to more people needed to staff these places, who will then be driving into Boulder, and the cycle continues until we end up like an overcrowded city in the San Francisco Bay Area. I understand that cities require a certain amount of growth in order to thrive, but I contend that there are better ways to promote growth, such as improving public transportation into the city. I welcome the addition of housing at the Alpine-Balsam site, but I'm asking you all to please consider a low-density option that fits with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and does not cause unintended consequences that will negatively and irreparably affect Newlands for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, and then Martin Boone.
Hi. My name's Susan Baca, and I live on Upland in North Boulder. I'm a Boulder homeowner, and I live in a 1,500-square-foot house in an estate residential zoning district. And there's been a lot of changes in Boulder recently regarding additional dwelling units, and now the anticipated zoning changes for RE zoning to encourage more density and hopefully affordable housing. I've recently applied to the city to turn a 350-square-foot portion of my garage into a licensed ADU, and I'm finding the cost of this transition to be prohibitive. Because the garage is not visible from the street and is behind my home, I'm required to install a fire suppression system. It was difficult to find qualified contractors, and only one of the three would even bid my tiny project. They have quoted $12,000 for a 350-square-foot studio. So, it's a 12-by-15 room with a 12-by-15 loft, for perspective. Another option I have would be to turn my 3/4-inch water main into a 1-inch water main, and that would be about $25,000. Or, I can attach the whole detached garage studio to my house, and that's about $100,000. And I noticed that the ADU regulations were eased to allow for less parking and larger square footage and encourage the affordable housing to, you know, more housing to happen. And I'm wondering if anybody considered fire regulations and the undue hardship that that puts on Boulder homeowners who would like to help ease the housing crisis and also create some added income. There are options to fire suppression systems, including misters and chemical suppressants. I just ask that you would maybe meet with a fire marshal and consider what some affordable options might be. So, thanks for your service. Thanks for hearing.
I think we have a question.
Well, I have a question, Mike.
Well, we can ask it at the end, if you want.
I'll ask my question at the end. It has to do with what you were talking about in terms of having to put in a new lines to afford the sprinkler system.
Thank you. Martin, and then Elizabeth Prentice.
My name is Martin Boone, and I've been a Boulder resident for almost 20 years. I was shocked when I learned some time ago that the city is spending upwards of $100 million to purchase and renovate the Boulder Community Hospital site. The result is left the city of Boulder, and now I'm talking about the core and the central part, without a first-rate hospital. And that's one of the reasons we moved to Boulder, was because of that beautiful hospital that was there. In classic cart-before-the-horse fashion, the decision was made without a clear plan or real consideration of the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods and the city in general. The goal now, in my view, should be to avoid compounding the errors. So, number one, the city should not destroy the character of existing neighborhoods in the interest of some theory of density. And number two, let's not throw good money after bad because of a previous mistake. What the city should do, in my view, is make every effort to improve the quality of life of all citizens by using this as an opportunity to provide more public space. And then, let's have a concrete plan for subsidized housing. And I kind of object to the word "affordable" because what we're really talking about is taxpayers subsidizing other people to live. And let's target that towards our first responders. Let's try some common sense on this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, and then Leslie Glustra.
Hi there, City Council. I just want to start by saying thank you so much for serving our city. My name's Elizabeth Prentice. I am a neighbor in Newlands and a Boulder native. I'm also a member of the Think Boulder group that helped put together the survey. So, I agree that Boulder has an affordability issue like lots of places in the United States that are highly desirable to live in. I guess, I do not think we can build our way out of it, and I haven't seen other cities be able to build their way out of it. The Federal Reserve actually published a paper in April of 2018 that said that marginal additions to housing will not impact affordability, that prices will march on, and nobody actually knows how much inventory is needed to stop that gap. So, in Boulder, I have a hard time with high-density market-rate housing as part of the solution. I feel like market-rate housing benefits developers in particular and a specific segment of the population. I would love to see permanently affordable housing on that site for our Boulder residents, seniors, middle-income families, vulnerable populations. High-density housing doesn't feel like a solution. It feels like a force fit. That compromises the character of our neighborhood. It compromises everybody in Boulder's view corridors. It's going to impact traffic. It could trigger massive rezoning that I do not believe is widely supported. And I think it hands over the reins to developers to try to solve an affordability issue that is a nationwide issue, and I have little faith in their ability to do it. I haven't seen it happen. In 2018, Boulder County built three times, Boulder County, excuse me, built three times the number of apartments of the previous three years. And here we are. More and more density is not the solution. It's who you build for. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Leslie, and then David Adamson.
Good evening, Council. Leslie Glustra, I live in Boulder, and I come down because Patrick comes down a lot to talk about things. But I wanted to start by saying thanks for our democracy, for everything you do for it. And of course, these First Amendment rights, Patrick's right to come down here and complain about the election he doesn't like. I mean, these are things we, so many lives have been lost. I'm absolutely in support... I'm absolutely in support of that, but I disagree with Patrick's facts, and I wanted to take a little bit of time to, I mean, they're not actually facts, his claims. And so I wanted to take a little, two minutes or something, to try to talk a little bit about that. Patrick spent a previous several times talking about the stranded cost obligation of the city. He uses an abbreviation of this formula. This is actually the FERC formula. Stranded cost obligation is the revenue stream estimate minus the competitive market value estimate times L, the length of obligation for the utility. This is all related to our municipal utility. And just let's start with L. There's a very reasonable possibility that L will be zero. Our franchise with XL terminated in 2010. Any number, no matter what it is, times zero is zero. In addition, Patrick has made quite a few either errors or omissions. Didn't subtract the transmission cost from the revenue stream estimate. He added the revenue stream estimate instead of averaging. This is huge. He failed to discuss option two. I'm going to send you all of this from the FERC order. There's another option, too, another way to figure out the competitive market value estimate, and that's what it costs us to replace. When you do all of these things, when you think about all the ways that the city could mitigate our stranded cost obligation, our staff is working extremely hard on that. We can expect the community to have quite a few options when the time comes. And then if we do have stranded cost obligations, there's lots of ways to pay it. And if we're going to save a lot, as we've learned, we're very likely to do on our energy bills, then we can use that to help. So just because Patrick says a lot of things doesn't always mean they're well-grounded. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. David? And then Elizabeth Black.
David Adamson, 815 North Street, Boulder, Colorado, and the executive director of Goose Creek Community Land Trust. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you for reading that big Alpine-Balsam packet. That was one of many. We want to, the folks that are here that are promoting number three for community, so especially thinking about that Alpine-Balsam Hospital redevelopment site, we're promoting the maximum, you know, strong housing emphasis for that site, and we're interested in that throughout that area. And I think that rather than getting into the depths of density, we're asking you all to come from the values that I think we all share. I think we can unite around these values of affordability, sustainability, equity, and livability. So we can build a beautiful neighborhood center there that doesn't have transportation problems. We can have people that, we don't have spill-over parking, we can make sure that doesn't happen, and we can make sure that it's not a source of a bunch of trips. So the natural concerns the neighbors have about impacts, that's natural, but we can definitely develop without those impacts, and we can meet our values of diversity and have a lot of permanently affordable mixed-income housing, permanently affordable. So middle-income housing. And the more of that we have, the more we meet our value of diversity. That's a key value of our town. Why would we have less? Why, when we invested so much money, would we have less housing if it isn't going to have a big negative impact, but only a positive impact? We need a place, as Martin Boone talked about, for our firefighters, for our policemen, for our teachers. 60,000 people a day having to commute in, that's a lot of frowns of the people who serve us and work for us. So in summary, we can have a project that I think meets our values, and we should talk about how do we best meet our values. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Elizabeth? And then Francois.
Elizabeth Black, 4340 North 13th Street. Grasses have deep roots, which help them survive and build rich soil. Grass supports many grazing animals, and grazing actually keeps our grasslands healthy and productive. How can graze, oops, what did I do? How can grazing help grasslands? When a cow or bison or prairie dog clips down grass, the smaller top can no longer support all the roots. The grass sloughs off part of its roots. Those dying roots feed soil microbes who multiply and feed nutrients back to the grass. The grass slowly starts to grow again. Eventually, the grass recovers fully. Its roots and leaves return to normal size, and soil microbes have sequestered extra carbon in the soil from all the dying roots. This is how grazing animals keep grass healthy and sequestering carbon. However, it's different if the grass is grazed too much. If an animal clips the grass and then clips the grass again before the grass recovers, the grass will slough off even more roots. The grass then becomes stunted. Grass doesn't care which animal overgrazes it. Grass does the exact same thing, whether overgrazed by cows or bison or prairie dogs. If grass has a chance to recover after it's grazed, it will grow back strong and sequester carbon. If grass is overgrazed, it will become stunted and will eventually fail. The bare soil then releases carbon instead of sequestering it. Just look at land at 47th and J. A decade ago, the farmer cut hay and carefully managed grazing. Grass was healthy and sequestered carbon. Today, your land is overgrazed by uncontrolled prairie dogs. No farmer, no pasture, no carbon sequestration. Grasses are stunted or absent, replaced by noxious weeds. Bare soil releases carbon to the atmosphere. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Francois? And then Elizabeth.
Hi. Francois's Point Set. I'm here to speak on Alpine-Balsam, and I'd like to question the whole idea of neighborhood character being single-family homes in that particular thing. If you look all around, there are a lot of multifamily homes. Right after I just got married in 1985, I lived in a 350-square-foot unit right across the street from there, right across from Ideal Market. So look up and down the, it's the perfect place for higher density, and I was able to afford that way back when. I probably couldn't even afford that unit very much right now, but we need affordability in this town. We just honored immigrants. My children, who are moving back to Boulder, and they're moving back here with their immigrant family, truly immigrants from other countries, cannot afford their hometown anymore. There's something really wrong here in our community. We are losing our housing for our teachers, for the baristas, for our firefighters. We've had a long time of caring about this. If we keep going with our 85% of residential land in the city is zoned, single-family, we can't continue with that. So I'm asking you to say, don't zone it like my house, which is in the neighborhood. It's very interesting because most of my neighbors, my friends, who have been there as long as we have, since 1989 or since the last 20 years, they've seen radical changes. The neighborhood has changed radically because of spec homes, luxury homes that have been built after the original homes were demolished. So we want to talk neighborhood character. You really have to say, which neighborhoods are we talking about? The ones from the 50s? A lot of that is gone. We really should go back to good zoning practices, and that means high-density and diverse housing, which we sorely need. Please listen to that and do your conscious. Thank you.
Thank you, Francois. Elizabeth? And then Richard O'Brien.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Hawn Dorf. I've lived in Alpine-Balsam since '76, and although I don't agree with all of you, I really appreciate that you ran for office. And the highest community service you can do for your country is to try to get in office. One reason our neighborhood has radically changed is because we have an inordinately high amount of abortion in my neighborhood. We have one of the foremost doctors of late and mid-term abortion, and I'd like to see that clinic move because if the city and community offices come in there, I'm afraid they're going to steer women with social services into the abortion clinic. Also, we had Casey Becker, who was pushed through the ranks here pretty fast, who campaigned on abortion, not abortion, IUDs for teenagers. Well, it's really none of her business to tell any of us what our children should be doing. And it's my understanding that IUDs cause a lot of other physical problems for women. And so I'm concerned now that other states are outlawing abortion. Are we going to harbor these women? Are they going to come? And is it going to occur in my neighborhood? I think the clinic should be moved to the hospital where people can get the utmost care until the whole Roe versus Wade is decided. I go with the federal law, what they tell me I agree with. I also objected before to you bringing in old city leaders to push through your agendas. This happened at 311. We had a mayor, old mayors and hospital owners, this and that, who shoved it through. And now I've had Will Tour at my house with a bunch of women on Women's Day, objecting to maybe what I'm speaking on tonight. I don't know. But I'd like Jared Pullis to come and take a look at who is advocating for what. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Richard.
I'm Richard O'Brien, Moorhead Circle in South Boulder. I'm just here tonight to invite you all to come to our event at the Planetarium about your work. The event is Bringing Back Dark Skies. It's about the outdoor lighting ordinance that you have supported and are continuing to support. I really greatly appreciate seeing you there. It's open, it's free to, it's open to the public and free, and 7:00 PM a week from tomorrow. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. With that, we're going to close Open Comment. I'm going to turn to staff to see if you have any responses.
None for me. Thanks.
Nothing for me.
For you? Council?
I had a question regarding the sprinkling of the ADU unit and the possibility of having to enlarge one's water lines in order to be able to do that. And a plumber, who used to live here, who now lives in one of the cities outside of Boulder, asked how long ago it was that we put in the regs for usage for the size lines that we have? In other words, with the new kinds of utilities that we have in terms of flushing low, whatever it is, faucets, that there's probably much less use than there was back in the time when those lines were first sized. And I think it might be helpful, in terms of how these regulations are coming down, to have that kind of information looked at by staff, by the utilities, and see whether or not there would be some compensation because of those things.
So we can provide a report to council about the sizing of water lines, as well as the requirements for sprinklers? So we're happy to provide that information. I don't think any compensation would be owed to people, but certainly we can provide you information, and you can go from there with that information.
I think it would be helpful for all of these people. The woman who spoke and talked about the cost of doing an ADU, and one of the things that we, in making those, opening that up, was to make it more affordable, to have more affordable housing. So this seems to be a contradiction in terms here of what, or intent and outcome for what the council was trying to do, and Charles Faro, that matter.
I do think, to the extent that there's options, because I definitely understand this challenge, having experienced it myself. And anyhow, I don't know if there's a way to make it easier to address ADUs, fire sprinklers, but to me, it is an interesting...
Yeah, thanks. I spoke with the fire chief about two weeks ago, and he's got some ideas of things to look at, so I'll ask him to provide information to you about the...
Great. I think that would be wonderful. Okay, I have a queue. Mary By, Erin, and then Sam.
I was just curious, because this came up a couple months ago when we were having discussions about the homeless shelter, and I'd asked for information on if we could get service animals and/or even pets in there so that people weren't left out in the cold just because they had an animal. So I was just curious if we had any response on where that was at.
I don't know about your request. I just sent an email to Kurt Fernhumber and Wendy Schwartz to figure out if the city somehow controls that. I certainly doubt it, so we'll provide information to you about that.
Great. Thanks, Dean.
Sure.
Erin?
Just going to bring that up as well, because certainly it would hope that at least service animals, it seems from a legal perspective, we might need to allow that. So I look forward to hearing back about that. The other one, I was just going to ask to follow up on the gentleman who was talking about the dark skies in the mobile home park. Do you know more about how that would work, like how the ordinance, whether it's enforceable on private property like mobile home parks?
I don't know.
I think that'd be interesting to know, you know, about how that would work out. So I'd request that we get more information about that.
Absolutely. So after the last meeting, when Mr. Feeney spoke, I also asked people from our housing department to reach out to the mobile homeowners to see if they would voluntarily require people to comply with dark skies, and I haven't heard back.
Okay. And just one more on that. I know the, so we're coming into the enforcement period is coming up on the dark sky ordinance before too long. Thank you, Lisa. Is there an easy way for homeowners to determine whether their fixtures are compliant? Like, it seems like it's a fairly technical requirement. Do we have a webpage or something that people could look at?
I believe we do, but I'll send you more information on that as well. After it was adopted, we did prepare a webpage and information that people could get online and look at, but maybe we need to provide more information about that.
Great. Thanks so much.
I just want to follow up on that.
Okay. And then, yeah, go ahead.
So I, too, would like to find out if we could apply dark skies ordinance within mobile home parks, and I brought this up last meeting, because these are all, from my perspective, single-family homes, and they should enjoy the same quality of life that everyone else does. With regard to, what was your other point?
Just how to be compliant, you know, information about homeowners, whether their fixtures were compliant?
Right. And I was wondering on informing people if we could have maybe an insert in our water bill or something like that, that everybody would get and would be able to see if they are compliant or not. Or I think it comes up July 30th is when enforcement is supposed to go into effect, or July 31st. And so I think it would be good if everybody could at least look and see for themselves if they are compliant.
Yeah, we might not be able to get it in the next water bill, because we actually decide what's going to be in there a couple of months in advance, but certainly later in the year, we could maybe schedule it.
Okay.
Sure.
Great idea. Sam?
Yeah, and Tom, this is probably for you. The gentleman brought up the point that CU is obligated to take water service or sewer service from the city. Could you send us the reference for that? Is that an IGA or...
I think what he said, I've heard that before, and actually Jeff Arthur sent me the IGAs right now. I haven't had a chance to read them, but I will.
I can, yeah. I can speak to that. So in 1997, when the CU did purchase the property, and we realized, or the city kind of realized what was going on, and that they had an ability to connect to Lafayette or Louisville, we entered into an IGA for 30 years, thinking we would have this figured. But, and I guess that does expire in 2030, but there's nothing to say that we couldn't renew that as well, either. So...
So the IGA is between the city and CU, or is it between the city and the county?
It's between the city. My recollection is it's between the city, the county, and Louisville and Lafayette.
I see. So it doesn't involve...
It does not involve CU.
Okay.
And so we wanted to make sure that CU could not get water and annex backwards or create this large campus at the edge of our town without our having some oversight. Is that good?
I was just going to say, my recollection is that Ron Stewart put this together when he was on the Board of Commissioners, and it was an IGA amongst all of the cities within the county in terms of respecting their own areas and...
That was a different IGA.
Was that? Okay. So there was another one that did the same thing, though, in terms of...
Okay. So maybe we'll get that information. Okay. So the other topics being discussed at length, we'll be discussing later in the meeting. So I think with that, unless there's anything more, thanks, everybody, for sharing your input at Open Comment, and we'll move on to our consent agenda.
Items A through D are before you tonight on your consent agenda.
Tom, you were going to explain a little bit.
I wanted to sort of speak briefly about item C and D. Item C is a motion to approve... Item C is a motion to approve, well, actually, to pass on first reading an ordinance. There's a public hearing scheduled for June 18th on this ordinance. This would be part of a settlement that the city entered into with Excel to settle a lawsuit. It does not settle municipalization, as some, we've had some people read it like that. There's been a lawsuit going on since 2014, challenging the city council's decision to create the entity that was the utility. We went up and back to the Supreme Court. We talked to Excel and agreed to settle that in a manner where both parties seemed to get what they wanted. But, so this, as I said, will be up for public hearing next, in two weeks. The second item, 3D, is a motion for that, well, the council will affirm the assets to be acquired if and when the city files condemnation against Excel. You may recall that the council in December of 2018 passed ordinance 8302 authorizing acquisition of Excel's assets. Since then, there have been some minor changes to that list. We keep hoping that we will get through the PUC proceeding. We are working diligently to do that. We want to be ready to go to condemnation when we can. The changes in this list are relatively minor. There are really two. One, there was a question about, so the commission, as you may recall, in September of 2017, conditionally approved the transfer of assets outside of the substations. So we have a list of assets that we say are outside of the substations. A dispute arose because distribution lines necessarily have to go inside of substations, because substations are the places where the transmission lines connect with the distribution system. So there was a dispute over what, whether the tips of the distribution lines that actually cross over the fence in the distrib, in the substations and enter the substations were assets inside the substations or assets outside the substations. We have agreed with Excel that we will note on the list that these are assets, these are part of the distribution system, even though they are physically located inside the substations. So we think we've addressed that concern. You may also recall that there were some issues with respect to substations. On the list that was included with ordinance 8302, we, there is one substation up on 75th Street that we listed an alternative solutions for. One was building a new station, substation adjacent, or the other alternative was building a substation on the city's wastewater treatment plant. We have worked with Excel through the FERC-regulated process to look at those options and narrowed it to only consider the one for the wastewater treatment plant. So we've eliminated the option of building a new substation on open space. So the list that you'll be affirming by passing the consent agenda tonight and passing this motion includes those two changes. Otherwise, it's reaffirming the same list that you approved in December of 2018 when you passed ordinance 8302.
Great, and when can we expect Exhibit 5B to be done?
That is the $64,000 question, Suzanne. We are working on that. We have a list that we think is complete. Excel has promised us a list sometime soon that they will not object to. As you recall, there are two separate lists that we included in our petition for transfer of assets. List 5A is a list of all of the physical facilities that we'll acquire. That's the one I spoke with, with the tips, that is the important thing for condemnation. There is no longer any dispute about that list, other than that one issue that we've addressed. The second list is what we call 5B. That's a list of property interests that are going to need to be transferred. For condemnation purposes, all we need to say is we're acquiring the property interests that are necessary to operate the facilities that are in 5A. So that's fine. The commission has ordered us to list all of the property interests that we're acquiring from Excel. That has proved to be a very difficult task, because a lot of those interests are not recorded. Also, it's not clear where exactly Excel's facilities are. We have a lot of schematic drawings. I got an email yesterday with overhead pictures purporting to show poles that may be in easements that we may have to acquire. I had somebody look at them, and one was a transmission pole, one was a pole that Excel's got to require, one actually wasn't in the easement. This is a very difficult task. For our purposes, as long as the list includes every interest that we're going to acquire necessary to operate the facilities in Exhibit 5A, it's fine. Excel seems to want to do a lot more. We would, we are trying very hard to get an agreed list before the commission. They have represented to us that they will get us there, they will be able to file a list by mid to late June. So we are hoping to do that. We are working with them. I sent them two different emails today, asking for an update on when that list is going to be, when we can see the list, because obviously we have to see it before we file it with the commission.
Great, thank you for that explanation. Any questions, concerns with the consent agenda? Oh, okay.
Call me consistent, but I'm going to vote against item D. I voted against the condemnation back in December, so I think it's appropriate for me to vote against the amended list of condemnation assets tonight.
So I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Any more discussion?
It's a roll call vote. We start with Councilmember Brockett.
Aye.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Marcell.
Aye.
Nagel.
Aye.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yates.
Aye on all items and no on 3D.
Young.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Yates, nay on 3D. Your first public hearing, your only public hearing tonight, is second reading of four ordinances designating individual landmarks on 14th Street.
Good evening, council. Marcy Cameron, our Historic Preservation Planner, will present this item.
Great. Thank you. So tonight, is this on right? The city council may approve the designations, modify and approve or deny these designations. And the criteria for review is found in 911-1 and 911-2 of the Boulder Revised Code, finding whether the subject properties meet the criteria for individual landmark designation in balance with the policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. And that criteria speaks to protecting, enhancing, and perpetuating building sites and areas reminiscent of past eras, enhancing property values, stabilizing neighborhoods, promoting tourist trade and interest, and fostering knowledge of the city's living heritage. And the property owner is in support of this designation.
Say that again?
The property owner is in support of these designations.
The same property owner?
It is.
Oh.
There's two ownership groups, but common ownership. So the properties are located on the corner of 14th and Euclid, up the street from the old Jones Drug and the Colorado Bookstore in the University Hill neighborhood. Zooming in, you can see the properties to the south have multiple buildings on them. The one at 1027 has three residential buildings. The one to the north has two residential buildings and a shed. And then the properties to the north each have one building. And I'll go through each one of those. A little bit of background of where these applications came in. In 2015, the Historic Preservation Program received a demolition permit application for the building on the corner, which is pictured, and the committee found that it was potentially eligible for landmark designation and referred it to the full board. In response, the owners proposed to relocate it on the other side of the adjacent building in the same block and designate it, along with seven other buildings, stabilizing the historic character of that block. And so the relocation was approved and the buildings were moved in 20, the singular building was moved in 2016. So in researching these eight buildings, some interesting themes arose. They are all indicative of architectural styles popular in the early 20th century and associated with the early development of the University Hill as a residential neighborhood for faculty, students, and Greek organizations as the university grew. Many of the buildings served as boarding houses at some point, and they are associated with successful and educated women who held advanced degrees and ran businesses in the early part of the 20th century. And they're all located within the potential University Hill Historic District. And we spoke with the owner about the benefits or the pros and cons of designating these as a historic district or as individual landmarks. They preferred individual landmark designation, and from our view, it provides the same amount of protection. So the first property is at 1027 14th Street, and it includes the Swain House, the Glenn Huntington Greek House, and the Jackson House. The new apartment building located to the south is not included in the proposed landmark boundary. So the Swain House was constructed around 1900 and is an example of the Edwardian vernacular style. It's associated with Josephine and Ida Swain. Josephine was a lady manager of the 1893 Chicago World's Fair and ran one of the first apartment buildings in the University Hill area. Her daughter Ida was a chemistry professor at CU and was named in American Men of Science Who's Who of American Women, and co-authored chemistry textbooks used at the University of Colorado. And then it was used as a boarding house from 1955 until 1965. The next house located directly south of the Swain House is the Glenn Huntington Greek House, which was constructed in 1926 by the noted architect Glenn Huntington, who also designed the Boulder County Courthouse and the Banshell. And it served as a sorority or fraternity for most of its existence, and was also a non-organizational boarding house from 1946 to 1952. The Demuth House is a small stone cottage along the alleyway, and it was constructed in 1924, and it has craftsman elements. It was a short-term home of Percy Paddock, who was Boulder's postmaster for many years and then was also associated with the Daily Camera. It served as student housing from 1926 until 1949, and the longest resident was Frances Demuth, who lived there from 1949 until 1970. She returned to school later in life and attained a degree after she worked at CU in the administration for a while. After she got that degree, she left and taught in Netherland. The next property at 1031 14th Street has two residential houses and one shed. The first one is one of, the first of three American Four Squares, all constructed in 1909. They all sit in a row. This one is the Vasey Cash House, and it was owned by Lillian Vasey, a widow, a prominent jeweler and optician, and she operated the house as a boarding house from 1920 until 1940. And then subsequently, Margaret Cash lived there from 1943 until 1965 and ran the house as a boarding house as well after her husband passed away. Along the alley is the Jackson House, and it was built for student housing in 1946 and inhabited by Alma and her daughter Ellen Jackson from 1946 until 1956. Ellen was the head of the documents library at CU and published several documents and one book. And it was constructed in 1923. And then there's a small vernacular shed along the alleyway. The next property is at 1045 14th Street, and it's the Nelson German House. It was built by Ben Nelson, a locally renowned contractor in Boulder, who worked on the Glenn Huntington Banshell and also many buildings at CU. It was inhabited by Frank E. E. German and his family from 1919 until 1951. He is considered to have founded the modern chemistry department at CU and gained national renown for his studies in carbon dioxide, radiochemistry, spectroscopy, fluorescence, and dry ice. And he is the subject of the book Parallel Lives: Two Hooger Chemists from Peru. And that goes, it was recently published, I'm sure the library might have a copy, and it documents his life, along with his brothers, and their history in chemistry. So this house was also constructed in 1909. It's an example of the American Four Square. It's a little bit more refined in its detailing than its, maybe sisters on either side of it, but a very handsome house. And then finally, at 1059 14th Street is the Beck Coppinger House, and it was built by John and Rachel Beck, also in 1909. John was a Union Civil War veteran and a chaplain of a local fraternal organization for veterans. They ran the building as a boarding house, and then later moved to a house in Whittier that is also a local landmark. That's at 1815 Mapleton. And then later, James and Edith Coppinger lived in the house from 1933 until 1961 and also rented out rooms. And again, it is an example of the American Four Square, built in 1909. And so the proposed landmark boundaries follow the property lines for the three northern properties and then encompass the portion of the site where the three historic buildings are on 1027 14th Street. And with that, staff and the Landmarks Board recommend that the city council designate these four properties as individual landmarks.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions from council?
No.
All right, let us open up the public hearing.
No one has signed up.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Can I make? Yes, you may.
So I would like to make the motion that the city council designate the following properties as local historic landmarks with boundaries as described in the Fourth Staff Memoranda dated June 4, 2019, finding that they meet the standards for individual landmark designation in sections 9-11-1 and 9-11-2, BRC 1981, and adopt it, the stated memorandum as the findings of the board. A portion of the property at 1027 14th Street as a local historic landmark, with the buildings to be known as the Glenn Huntington Greek House, the Swain House, and the Demuth House. The property at 1031 14th Street as a local historic landmark, with the buildings to be known as the Vasey Cash House and the Jackson House. The property at 1045 14th to be known as the Nelson German House. And the property at 1059 14th Street to be known as the Beck Coppinger House. Second. And I'm thrilled this happened. I used to live just two houses up the street in the back, one of those tiny little cottages, for a couple of years, with my new baby, and, that was a long time ago. And it's, I used to walk down that street, and I was very concerned when the first house that you described was going to be demolished, or was, that was being considered. And I just want to thank the property owner, and I want to thank staff for putting this together. And this is a significant, I think, landmarking, and it is appropriate, and it is, it just helps retain the character, the historic character of the hills. So those are my reasons.
Anything else, Cindy?
I just think it's also great to be preserving these houses, these, as a great example of part of our past, so it will live in the future. Thank you.
I would just echo that. These are very, I have to say, they're fine-looking houses, and they add a lot to the University Hill District, so, which is near where I live in. Yeah, I think it helps anchor the neighborhood.
And very importantly, we're not demolishing, so.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, roll call vote. We start with Councilmember Carlisle.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Marcell.
Yes.
Nagel.
Aye.
Weaver.
Yes.
Yates.
Aye.
Young.
Yes.
Brockett.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Your next item is Alpine Balsam.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Chris Mestrock is going to lead this one off, followed by Jean.
Thanks, Jean. I'm going to let Jean grab a seat here next to me. We are here tonight to check in on the Alpine Balsam area plan. As council will recall, we were here just a couple of weeks ago on May 16th to talk specifically about the Alpine Balsam city-owned site. Tonight, we're here to talk about the area plan in general. So the flow for the presentation tonight is a brief introduction, and then Jean will talk through the community feedback and. talk through the community feedback and recent analysis that we've done since we were last here at council back in February. We'll touch base on the project goals and objectives and some slight refinements to those, and then go over the land use options and the components with the key question of are they ready for public review? And then we'll go over what those next steps are for public review and community engagement, and then we'll be happy to answer questions. And we've prepared some council questions to help frame the conversation. And the first is if council agrees with the revised area plan goals and objectives. The second is if the area plan draft components and options are ready for public review and input, and really with the key question of should any of these options be eliminated or any new options added? And then any feedback or questions about the other components related to land use, character, connections, access and mobility, et cetera? And then to touch base on the approach for further assessment of flood mitigation and the homework that we've done in the last few weeks related to that. So just a real quick touch base, as we talked about on May 16th, the direction that we received from council was to finish the planning process for the Alpine Balsam area plan. And the words up here on the screen are a little small, but we talked about that there's a clear process for adopting area plans in that we identify opportunities and issues, we develop options, we engage the community on those options, and that's the phase we're in right now. This is similar to the engagement framework wheel. And the next step is to do a final engagement about final options and then to bring forward the area plan to make a decision to adopt that plan, then we would proceed with implementation to achieve the vision in the area. And just as a quick reminder, what's the purpose of an area plan? Why do we do area plans? They are to help define areas and vision for the area, and in this case, we have an incredibly successful neighborhood center, so how do we continue to make that carry forward? To guide the redevelopment within the area and to create a common understanding of changes and to ensure that those changes are consistent with the overall community vision. To also identify any public improvements, so that's streets and path connections, any infrastructure, those sorts of related things, and to also ensure economic and financial viability of the plan. So just as a bit of a quick forecast, what will you have in this area plan, the Alpine Balsam area plan? It will include an introduction and background as well as the vision, goals, and objectives for the area, and then it'll define what's that future planning for the area. So it'll have a land use map, so that's why the options that you have before you look a lot like land use maps. And it'll also include urban design guidelines, character districts, so that helps define what do we want this place to look and feel like to make sure we get the outcomes as redevelopment occurs over time. And then also related to our strategies around access and mobility, as well as transportation demand management. And lastly, about flood and stormwater and the strategy related to that. And then as we do in all area plans and sub-community plans, there's a section on facilities and services. So that's how do we make sure that our city infrastructure helps support the redevelopment that occurs in that area? So things related to utilities, parks, fire and police, library schools, public art. And then there'll be a specific section for this about planning for the city-owned land and then identify the implementation steps. So that's just a bit of a forecast of what will be included. You've received basically the pieces and parts of the draft area plan, and that's what we'll take out for public review. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jean, who's going to go through the character of the area.
Great, thank you, Chris. So as you know, in previous discussions that we've had, we've been really focused on the city-owned site, but what we're talking about tonight is really that wider area for the area plan. I'm going to briefly walk through, start with a quick orientation to the planning areas, character districts. District one is the Neighborhood Center. There we go. And it's really the heart of the Neighborhood Center that includes the retail center, the community plaza, and Ideal Market and shops. It also includes the east block of the city site, including the pavilion and the parking structure, the Boulder Medical Center at Balsam and Broadway. Character District two is really the rest of the redeveloped hospital site, the center and west blocks, and it also includes the two private parcels that are on that southwest corner by Ninth Street. Character District three is really two areas that serve as the north and south gateways for the Neighborhood Center along Broadway. The south gateway includes mixed use, both commercial and residential uses and historic buildings on that west side. And on the east side of Broadway is one- to-two-story commercial buildings with surface parking on that east side. The area presents some opportunities for changes to encourage housing. And then the north gateway is primarily high-density residential that provides a transition from some of the lower-density residential areas further north that transitions into the Neighborhood Center. No changes are proposed for that north gateway area. Character District four includes the block between Alpine and North that's east of Ninth Street. The current uses are a mix of residential and medical and commercial office uses. There's a good amount of surface parking, and the non-residential areas in this character district are places where the options suggest ways where we can add housing. Character District five reflects several areas where existing housing or civic uses function well, and the options reflect the vision to preserve these areas with no changes proposed. Many folks have expressed appreciation for the current mix of the residential types and densities, especially in the block along Portland Avenue just east of Ninth Street, as well as how these areas serve to transition to lower-density housing in the outer areas. Okay, now I want to share some of the key findings about what we've learned from the community engagement and the analysis that's been completed over the past year and that has shaped the options. Key themes from the community engagement include neighborhood quality of life is very high. The results, this results from a mix of people, mix of housing, character and safety of the areas, walkability and access to activities like the North Boulder Park and the Commercial Center, as well as the downtown and the mountains. The Neighborhood Center functions very well and is beloved. People appreciate the current look and feel of the center, as well as the easy access to the range of retail, commercial, and medical uses in the area. As you know, there are mixed views about new housing and density. Some of the residents have concerns about adding too much housing on the city site or in the area that might be too big or might negatively impact traffic, parking, services, or visual character. Conversely, others see the area as an ideal location to add density to address the critical housing needs in an innovative and attractive way. On recreation, open, and green spaces, people love the North Boulder Park, but as the area changes, other green and open spaces will be important for connections and places to gather. Changes for flood mitigation should be very carefully considered. And on access and mobility, people appreciate the current ability to walk, bike, take transit, and drive. There are concerns for more traffic and parking. People suggested improvements for safety, ease of moving through the area with or without a car, and ways to promote all-mode mobility. And then regarding redevelopment on the city site, needing to be thoughtful and innovative. People want the redevelopment to fit in, to support the Neighborhood Center, to add value and have good public spaces. They want housing that helps meet affordability goals. They also want open spaces, welcoming places to gather, and a little retail along with the city service hub. Retail, results from the traffic impact study suggests that changes in trips and traffic from any of the options can be accommodated by the existing roadway network. Any of the changes from redevelopment on the site will generate fewer trips than those that were estimated to have been generated by the active hospital. And the consultants also made recommendations about the access and mobility strategy. Findings about flood mitigation analysis, the staff and the consultants explored many options for flood mitigation for both the site and the wider area. The results indicate that it's not possible to construct flood mitigation on the North Boulder Park without significant impacts to the park, and we recommend taking that off the table. Even if mitigation could address the 100-year flood event in this stretch of Upper Goose Creek, there's limited ability east of 13th Street to continue those improvements. For the Alpine Balsam site, we recommend proceeding with site-specific mitigation. This includes pursuing conveyance at the northern side of the site and not a center greenway. The Upper Goose Creek flood mitigation study will proceed in evaluating potential flood mitigations in the reaches downstream of the Alpine Balsam site, and that will proceed on a different schedule than the area plan. Findings about affordable housing. Making progress toward the affordable housing goal is a primary objective for the area and for the site redevelopment. What we know about affordability of new housing is that for private development in the area, affordability will likely be addressed through the city's inclusionary housing program and through cash and lieu. For the city site, we have more leverage and control. We know that density directly affects the ability to support a development of sufficient size to leverage state and federal funds for 100% affordable project. There will also need to be a mix of market rate and affordable housing, and for the market rate to contribute by cash and lieu. Affordable housing outcomes are best supported on the site with more flexibility in future zoning for parking, building heights, and density. Onto our goals and objectives. So council has seen the initial Alpine Balsam goals, and we have added some objectives over the course of the project. These goals build upon the vision plan and clarifying objectives that are based on further analysis, option development, and community feedback, excuse me, the full list of goals and objectives. The objectives part is in your packet. And so land use options, as Chris mentioned, there's maps that look like land use maps, and these are our options. We've developed five that emphasize different goals, focusing on the critical need for housing and how we might change and how the area might change to add housing. With each of these options, we developed rough estimates of potential new units in the area. These are very high-level projections based on simple dwelling unit per acre assumptions, and they're really to be shown just as an order of magnitude for the range of future potential. As you know, land use changes don't force property owners to redevelop into something different, but allow and sometimes incentivize redevelopment to occur over time. Land use prototypes, so before I describe the differences in the land use options, I want to talk a little bit about what we mean by land use prototypes. Developing prototypes in the plan allows us to get more specific about the desired character. We can use both a description and a range of images to help define what's the range of appropriate for each of these areas without being too prescriptive. And these prototypes in the final plan will help shape the appropriate zoning and potentially design guidelines. So for example, what we mean by high density. In Boulder, based on the comprehensive plan definitions, high density means, oh, these are, I'm sorry, I don't really want these flying in, we'll just put them all up here. Okay, there we go. Based on the comp plan land use designation, high density means really anything above 14 dwelling units per acre, and that can take many forms, as was described at the three different prototypes that you saw in the draft legend. The mixed and high-density housing within the area, some of the areas along Portland Place and in the wider area, have many different shapes and forms. These are generally three stories, but can look and feel really different, from townhouses to three-story stacked flats and apartments. The building height map will be used in conjunction with the land use prototypes. And for example, you know, we've heard a lot about not wanting buildings to be so boxy and to have potential for pitched roofs. With the building height maps, we can specify more detail about what is desired between the 35 and 55 feet to achieve the desired character.
Jean, can I interrupt you for there? Sorry about that. But just you talking about a building height map, that's not a concept I'm familiar with from our other area plans. Do we have that anywhere else? Can you flesh that out a little bit, what that might look like?
Yeah, I think it's something that isn't in our other area plans, but I think the idea was knowing that we will either apply existing zoning designations or write new zoning designations for this site, but knowing that height has been a primary concern from some folks, we wanted to try and introduce a concept into the area plan that would help differentiate areas of transition across the site. So it's really just a way to try and describe that future vision so that when we actually apply regulations, we can have a little bit more specificity than just maybe a broad zoning designation across the whole site.
Do you mind if I keep going for a minute?
No, go for it.
Yeah, and that's, Jean raises a really good point, which is, right now, that area is not accepted in Appendix J of the height ordinance. And so in order to achieve some of those building forms of pitched roofs and things like that, and then what we've heard from council in the past around building heights as we get closer to Broadway is that up to 55 feet would be appropriate. So this area would be added to the height exception area in Appendix J. And so we wanted to be able to provide, again, more specificity of how building forms would look in the site if we're going to be able to lift the heights and go higher in that area.
And so are you imagining that being a regulatory thing, like that you would have a maximum height that's different from our kind of current zoning codes? It might fluctuate between some of the different levels we have currently?
Yeah, the idea is that in the area plan, that would give us that guidance, and then we would apply that either through existing zoning or when we create new zoning districts for the area.
Okay, very good. It sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
So I just have a follow-up on that. And how would this be different from form-based code?
I think in the area plan itself, this is more of that policy guidance. And then when we apply zoning to this area and rezone the area, if we decide to do it as a form-based code, we could do that, or if we want to do it as a more standard zoning district with design guidelines attached to it, we can still pick and choose, but we would use the guidance in the area plan around building heights to achieve it.
So this would kind of tee it up for that kind of approach, for a form-based code approach?
It allows that, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Clarify? So would this also achieve that on that site, all the roofs would not, or height would not be the same? Because one of the problems, I would think, where I would say with Transit Village is they're all the same. So you get this big boxy kind of perspective. And so within the site, you would have controls or?
I think, put another way, could we require a variety of heights, roofs, lines?
Yeah, and that's what we want.
That's exactly the idea, is now, we may apply zoning to a larger geographic area, but then we can start to derive where building heights are or drive building forms a little bit differently to respond to that feedback that we've heard about big buildings or boxy buildings, all of the exact same heights that, so as you can see in the graphic here, hit forward one more for me. And it's a little hard to see, but in the examples in your packet, it shows where there may be an area where it's three-story buildings with pitched roofs or four-story buildings with pitched roofs or areas where maybe it's appropriate to go up to the height maximum with a more flat roof like the parking garage, those sorts of things. It's a way to give more refinement.
And just one more thing. So like a form-based code, it really goes into an extreme level of detail on all the windows and lots and lots of details. We could kind of take a piece of that here. In other words, I can say, well, maximum height of whatever, 42 feet, but no more than 25% could go up to that maximum, and they're, you know, right? So we could do something like that? That's weird.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, I want to touch briefly. Included in your materials are the urban design maps that have a lot on them, and I just want to, we're not going to spend a lot of time walking through this tonight, but I want to assure you that the urban design components are a really key part of the area plan options and the outcomes for the area. The options include recommendations for public realm, public gathering spaces, green spaces, and connections. So now, for each option, I'm going to very briefly touch on the intent of the changes for the area and also for the site, and what that means for character and affordable housing.
Okay, Jean, can I ask two questions? Can you explain, you said earlier, just for the community, that in some of these, you expect a lot of change in the larger area and some not? And since we don't control the larger area, can you speak to that, right? Why one of these would spur additional, why one of them is small and one of them is big in terms of influence area? And then the other thing is, are these intended to be options that you can pick and choose from out in the public or that one of these is the winner? Okay, those are my two questions.
Good points. So first, again, like we, as you know, we have more control over what happens on the site. We don't have as much control over what happens in the area, but we do have control over the land use and zoning. These changes would suggest future, just like as we have done in many areas, subcommunity and area plans, where we suggest different changes in the area and it evolves over time. So we would change those regulations to?
So we'd actually change the zoning?
You encourage or incentivize that type of thing within the area. And I'll touch on this a little bit in the community engagement section as well. We floated some options, but I, you know, we know that there are going to be some good ideas in the community about how to mix and match or how to change these, and that's going to be one of the primary things that we're going to ask folks, is what they like about them, what they don't like about them, how they might change them to better achieve the goals and objectives, and what else we might consider about how to craft really the best path forward that both meets goals and objectives and addresses people's concerns.
So if we eventually adopt a single area plan and agree and move that forward, that will have some regulatory authority at site plan review. will have some regulatory authority at site plan review, correct? Meaning that the planning board and the council will have to find that the proposal in site plan review meets the intent of the area plan. Is that correct?
That's correct. So there's kind of a link to both at the site review and then the other is related to our subdivision regulations for connections specifically. By adopting a connections plan, that allows us to then obtain those connections at the time of subdivision.
Got it. And so it's these would be, this area plan would be something like the downtown design guidelines. In other words, it will have regulatory interpretive kind of control but not strict control like a form based code would.
Correct. It's not regulations, but it'll give you that almost policy guidance in a more geographic specific area, similar to the way we apply the North Boulder Sub Community Plan or the Transit Village Area Plan or the scatterings of other area plans throughout the city.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Option one proposes few changes in the area, only a few small areas to change land use to reflect existing higher higher housing density. These changes are proposed to reflect and protect that existing housing and to reduce the nonconformity. For the site, mixed use business is proposed for the east block because it allows civic services and a mix of uses. Medium density housing is proposed on the center and west blocks. Based on the feedback that we received earlier from both planning board and council in our November and February check ins about the desired amount of housing to be achieved, staff was not intending to include a minimal growth or lower density option. But since there was a lot of community feedback and concern for density, we included the medium density option to show the differences and potential trade offs, especially around achieving affordable housing on the site. The character of the area would remain much as it is today with changes only in the city site and there would be a limited mix of housing types in about the two to three story range. This option has lower potential for affordable housing as it does not have sufficient density to be attractive to affordable housing projects. The housing would likely be market rate only with inclusionary housing met through cash and lieu.
Hey, on these, are you going to give any range of units just so that people get a sense or are you deliberately not?
I can't.
Okay, I think that might be helpful just because?
Send it here?
Oh, they're down here. They're just not up there. Okay.
I did want to, I did want to couch with the preface that these are pretty broad estimates. So I wouldn't?
Just for comparison purposes?
For comparison purposes.
Okay. Yep, that's what I thought.
The housing yields for the site, so these are a little bit because there is, there is some, there is, you know, some housing potential within the area for redevelopment under current zoning and but not, not especially a lot. So for the site, the range is really between about 65 and 105 units and within the area around 50 units. So a total of about 150 units.
Just so I'm clear, in the area, it's just the area for the area plan, right? Okay.
Yeah, so when we say area, it's the area that's kind of outlined in color on the screen. And when we say the site, we're referring to the city owned site where the former hospital stands today.
Which is number two in your site? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, it's one and two.
Correct.
But it's pieces of it, it's not the whole thing.
Right.
So just to be clear, abundantly clear, you've got the site, then you've got the area, and then there's the total. So the area, as it's mentioned here, means everything except the site.
Correct.
And that that contemplates, as we go through, these, these are going to contemplate potentially zoning changes. In other words, when we get to two, you say potentially in the area, there could be 400 side, 100 housing units in area. And another option one is 50. So that that difference between 450 would be as a result of some zoning changes in the area outside of the site, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
It's also, it's from in option one, 65 to 105 units and in option two, it's 170 to 250 units.
He was just comparing the 40, 400 and 50.
I was comparing the 400 and 50, if I understand that, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
All right. So option two focuses on encouraging future redevelopment in select areas to add housing. You'll see on the red maps on the handouts in front of you. Several areas are proposed for conversion from commercial and office uses to residential and mixed use. The neighborhood center is proposed for the change to mixed use business, the area in purple that you see on the map, to ensure that the heart of the retail center is maintained and to achieve the vision for neighborhood centers in the comp plan. For the site, this option includes a range of higher density prototypes to allow variation in building and housing types and to allow greater flexibility in ways to achieve affordable housing. The prototypes most closely reflect the mixed density residential in the area, especially to the south, two to four stories with a variation of building types. This option offers good potential for affordable housing on the site. Option three?
Jean, sorry to interrupt again, but just a question on the areas of potential change, which the folks in the audience aren't seeing, but we've got these kind of red areas on the map and they're, they're a really broad area of red for potential change. And you know, some of those buildings are recent and, you know, pretty nice and you figure they're not going anywhere anytime soon, but that's not kind of factored in here? So what makes you call it an area of potential change in that?
It's areas where we have identified some changes to the land use. And in some of those, I think what you're mentioning, it's, it's for consistency of land use. So it's a land use for the area. We're not, we're not going to apply land use parcel by parcel based on the, the age of the building, but in a, in an area where we want to anticipate what that future is and maintain it.
Gotcha. I guess I'll just, one quick comment as you go forward to maybe clarify that that's where you're talking about potentially changing the zoning, but not where the buildings would necessarily change, you know, because I think it gives a kind of a sense of people like, oh, well, this whole area here is just going to, you know, redevelop over?
No, as I mentioned, changing the land use and zoning would would be really an evolution over time. And should that happen and it's, it's not required and it may not happen to all of the, all of the parcels or all of the areas.
Right, totally understood. I just want to make sure that that message is clear to folks, it's really strictly about where you might contemplate changing some?
And I'm guessing it won't be. So I speak about how this looks.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, very scary. And I'm not sure that it gets that, yeah, your message across.
A point taken, understood for the messaging for the engagement.
Thank you.
That makes sense. Okay, where are we? We're on three. All right. Option three would steer future redevelopment toward housing uses, housing uses and allow higher density of housing development. The option suggests converting nonresidential uses to housing and proposes a bit more intensity than in option two as a way to show what might maximize the potential in the area. Similar to option two and also the recommendations for options four and five, the neighborhood center is proposed for the change to mixed use business to support that comp plan neighborhood center vision. For the site, option three includes two higher density prototypes to allow variation in building, in buildings and again, maximize the flexibility to achieve affordable housing. The character would include buildings that range from two to four stories with more areas above that 35 foot height mark and it offers good potential for affordable housing on the site. Okay, so estimates for the strongly emphasized housing, so I think I missed the numbers on, on option two. So if we went back to option two, the estimates for housing for the site range from about 170 to 250 and in the area approximately 400, so a total of up to 650 units. For option three, strongly emphasized housing, the options, the prototypes on the site is, estimates are for 230 to about 300 units and in the area approximately 530, so for a total of up to 830 units.
But again, that's, just to be clear, some, some of those units already exist, right?
Now, this is, this would be really about changes and it's an upper limit, broad estimate of D use per acre. So evolution over time should properties redevelop.
Yeah, you're going to have to figure out how to say that in a way that conveys a range over time.
Over time, yeah.
Okay.
So I have a question. It looks like every option except for one changes the shopping center designation to mixed use business from community business. Can you talk about the rationale for that briefly?
Yeah, I think the rationale is really how do we start to indicate the evolution of those areas to meet the principles that we have described in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan in the last update? So whether the zoning that we apply to that area changes to something else or whether we change the BC one or BC two zoning to meet the intent of this area plan? The idea is that the area plan would signal the same thing that our comprehensive plan signals, which is we want to see those neighborhood centers evolve to more mixed use areas. How do we retain the really amazing retail and commercial that exists today while allowing them to become more mixed use over time?
I think that's going to be really important to communicate what that could look like. So how do we maintain the ideal market? How do we maintain, you know, the, the community plaza and get additional uses on the site? And I think that's going to be really hard for people to picture, right? What does that look like? And so anything that you can do to visualize that, because in, in two through five, those shopping centers are all proposed to be changed to mixed use business. And so what does that mean? What does that look like? I think it's going to be really important to communicate.
Okay, but before we give our opinions, describe your last one.
Little bit, little bit more.
Yep.
All right. Option four. Option four would allow some intensification of use in the area and allow redevelopment of either business or residential uses. This option acknowledges the desire to preserve many of the medical or professional offices in the area while allows, while allowing housing to develop above or alongside. For the site, option four includes the same proposed prototypes as in option two that that's for to emphasize housing. The character in the area could evolve over time to more mixed use or new housing and building heights could increase in some areas to three to four stories. The estimates for housing for option four is on the site is 170 to 250 units and, and up to 400 in the area, so for a total of up to 650. Okay, and option five?
If we move on to option five, could you contrast four and two for us? Can you tell us?
Four and which one?
Four and two, can you kind of call out the difference?
Because they look a lot alike.
So two is a little bit, it's the, it's really the differences are in character district four and some in character district?
Five B.
Five, well, yeah, the five B, it's really five, five, or three A, the gateway at the bottom there, the difference of mixed use types. So for option two, character district four is really going to housing. So it's changed to, from the transitional business uses that and land use that is there today to housing, whereas option four proposes the mixed use residential in, in character district four. And then we have the, more of the mixed use business for the gateway area that would allow a little bit more of the, it's, it's more of an emphasis on the nonresidential uses at first, first or first and second floors where the mixed use residential is really about, nonresidential uses just on the first floor and housing above. Does that help?
Yes, so fundamentally the same, that's, looks like the difference is, is one encourages housing to the southwest and the other one encourages housing to the southeast. And that looks like the?
It's these two parcels.
Right, it's the parcel four and parcel three, three A and, and one of the five Bs, right? Those are the differences. So one, one pushes house, so two pushes housing into parcel four, which is why I call it the, I guess, west center below our site. Is that right?
Yep.
And the other, and, and, excuse me, that was four and two?
There's more mixed use in those areas.
Yeah, two pushes housing down south along the Broadway corridor. But they're, they're both kind of net the same amount of housing, just in different places, is that right?
Yes.
And with respect to the site itself, they're identical?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so option five is similar to option four in the recommendations for mixed use in the area. For the site, it, for the site, it focuses on the significant civic presence, presence, that is, along with the city service center relocating the Boulder County services functions from Iris and Broadway. We've been working with the county staff to fully understand the county's space and parking needs. And for this location to be viable for the county, it would require utilizing the entire center block to accommodate the 120,000 square foot four story building as well as some structured parking for clients and customers. There's a lot to understand about this option and several variables that are not yet known as we discussed at our last check in at May 16th. We are working with the county to understand the process and all of the variables. This area, for, under this option, the area would be, or the site would be more of a civic campus than in other options, would require construction of some structured parking. There would be fewer housing units than in other options, however, presumably there would be potential for housing at the Iris complex if the county's functions could move to the Alpine-Balsam site. And that estimates are about between 30 and 90 units on the site and then that same about 400 units within the area as in option four.
Okay, we have some questions. I have Bob and then Sam.
Just a couple of questions.
But these are clarifying questions.
These are?
We're going to let her finish and then we're going to give, then we're going to go deeper.
Definitely clarifying questions.
Okay.
How many acres? Is that a good question? Between Broadway and 11th, Alpine and Balsam, just look at number five, you have that black line there. Just give us an order of, is that like two or two and a bit acres?
Say that again, Bob.
Sure, 11th Broadway, Alpine-Balsam.
11th Broadway.
So you've got that black line, that vertical black line that runs along, alongs?
Yep.
The eastern third of the? Eastern third of, of the hospital site. Is that roughly two acres or two and a quarter?
Roughly.
The reason I'm asking the question, I'm just trying to understand like how much more land the county, the county accommodation? I know that they asked for two acres, I'm just trying to figure out where the two acres is.
Yeah, I think a way, a way to look at it is if you look at between options four and options five.
Yeah.
See how in option five, the purple mixed use business area extends further west?
To?
That's the idea, to go towards that center block area to meet, meet the needs to have a county presence as well as?
So, so under all the options, between 11th and 12th and, 11th and Broadway, sorry, Alpine and Balsam, that's all designated for city, is that right? There's no county in there along Broadway?
Correct.
Why is that?
Yeah, why is that? Because I, I see where the pavilion building is. What goes in the other acre and a half there?
So what we've talked about, and you can kind of see it on the screen here, is the pavilion building is in the southeast corner, so at the corner of Alpine and Broadway.
Yeah.
And then as you go north, right now, some of that area is in a high hazard and in the flood zone.
Uh-huh.
And we've kind of talked about that as more of a flexible area that depending on how the flood mitigation work occurs, that that could then be either a civic presence, city or county, or it could go more mixed use or more housing. The idea is that it would still have that mixed use business designation.
So there could be housing in there, yeah.
But what, but you haven't explained why? Why wouldn't that, if we were going to, why isn't that part of the county? Why is the county in the?
Right.
And we'll have the county, we'll ask you guys to come up in a second. But why isn't that, why doesn't the county thing goes this way and take that front corner?
So if we were keeping the configuration with the connect, with connections through there, that upper parcel with the fit testing, it's only about, it could only really accommodate about 80,000 square feet. So it wouldn't meet the full county needs.
If, if the city didn't go in there at all, at all, let's say we decided that we didn't, we didn't need the pavilion building for the city needs, could the county go in in the, the eastern acre between 11th, or eastern two acres between 11th and Broadway? Could that be a county site?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, Sam?
So the other thing that I think we need to understand for option five is how many acres at Iris and Broadway should that be something that we contemplate with the county? How much of that land could be developed into housing? And what would that yield for units? Because when I look at option five, I kind of want to have both pieces in place as far as the amount of housing that can be developed because we're giving up some land at the hospital site in order to put county offices there, but in exchange, the county offices will be vacated at Iris and Broadway. So I think as we go forward, it doesn't need to be answered tonight, but we need to understand how much can be developed there and what we would expect that to yield for housing.
Great.
Exactly.
Okay, so we clearly are moving on beyond?
Right.
Clarifying, so? So we clearly are moving on beyond the clarifying, so why don't you finish up and then we'll.
All right. So also included in your materials is access and mobility strategy. The proposed strategy is based on the transportation master plan, the access and mobility and parking strategy, and the climate commitment policy, as well as prior direction about access and parking for the site. It includes a shared parking strategy that's guided by the SUMP principles, creation of a general improvement district to fund ongoing programs and services. There are options for transportation demand management and parking management. There has been interest in expanding the district beyond the city's site, and that will be assessed through further engagement process. So the TDM options might include ecopasses, van pooling subsidies, bike share and car share memberships, micro mobility programs, and mobility on-demand subsidies. As Chris mentioned, we also have a draft connections plan. This planning area really benefits from already being very walkable with good bike and transit routes as well as infrastructure. Access and mobility were a big part of the discussions at the community workshops earlier this year, and community members provided a lot of suggestions. Our staff has worked to develop a draft connections plan that outlines new opportunities for paths, streets, and other improvements. And the draft connections plan reflects the community feedback as well as the work on the low-stress walk and bike network plan with recommendations to build strong mobility options in the, in the area for all modes of travel.
Before we move off of transportation, I have a question on transportation. You may not be able to answer this tonight. That's fine. But I just want to make sure, well, maybe you can. I'll answer as a question, if not, kick it down the road. Can you guys, because what we're struggling with here is two things, right? You know, high-density, medium-density, low-density, that's density on housing. And then we're also trying to balance between office and, and housing, right? Can you guys do math on, I guess this is a TDM, like what kind of traffic loads are implicated by office, you know, an acre of office versus an acre of housing? You know, and maybe it's an acre of office, acre of.
Right.
Light housing, acre of dense housing. Because I know the neighbors have raised questions and concerns about in-and-out traffic, but I don't know how to compare office to housing to.
Right.
Give a sense for that.
With the traffic impact study, the consultants took a look at all the different, broadly looked at the different types of uses recommended or proposed within all of these options. And the results that we had from the traffic impact analysis showed some differences within those. But the ultimate result was within any of the options that the existing network could accommodate those uses.
There are, I get that. But there's differences between office use and housing or low-density housing and high-density.
Right. Very different trip generation rates, different implications for peak times.
Okay.
Probably times of day, yeah?
At some point in time, you'll kind of lay that all out for the community as part of this engagement.
Yeah. We can include more specific information about what the results from the traffic impact analysis were.
Thanks.
Yeah. If you dive into that attachment that's in your memo, it's, it gets pretty technical pretty fast. We tried to kind of at least just include the high-level executive summary, but we can get into lots of details, but at least we can explain that difference between the number of trips that are generated by different uses and what those, what those outcomes are.
Okay. We, yeah? I have just a quick question. But it's also dependent on who lives there, correct? And to what extent, if you dive deeply, was that addressed?
Yeah. In terms of.
In terms of who lives there. So for example, if it is people with disabilities, for example, that can't drive, so therefore wouldn't have cars. So to what extent was that factored in?
Yep.
Mary, I think it was really trying to take a look at what, you know, what the upper side of trips.
Oh, okay. So not the, not the lower end.
Yeah. And the modeling that we did, because we heard so many concerns about traffic generation and the potential for that, in the scenarios that they modeled, we had them model essentially assume that they were all housing units that also included, you know, residential that would typically have a car. So at least we'd know what those upper limits are. But if, through the actual redevelopment and the buildings that are built there, say, are for, as you said, maybe buildings that house a population with disabilities that don't have as many cars, obviously that would then reduce the number of trips. And those are the sorts of things that then get identified through the actual redevelopment on the parcels.
And I think a lot of that might factor into the parking strategy as well, the parking management.
Okay. How many more slides do you have? Because we're dying to give you our opinions.
I have three, I have, I have only really.
So many.
One of substance. Okay.
Well, go quick.
Really close.
Because we're almost done listening.
Very close. Okay. We are excited about community engagement. The purposes will be to share the options, the goals, the analysis, the trade-off, and the decision-making process and schedule. We're going to be asking community members, exactly what we talked about a little bit ago, about how we best meet the goals, what they like about the options, et cetera. We're planning several opportunities and venues, recognizing that the engagement is incurred, occurring during the summer months when people might be away. So we need to have several times and ways with the people can engage. Our next steps include a discussion just like this with the planning board on Thursday, meeting with advisory boards, as well as community engagement through June and July with the goal of refining this information into a recommended draft plan for a public hearing, review, and direction by the planning board and the city council in August. And now we're back to the questions that you have before you are aimed at ensuring that the options and the information we have prepared for the community feedback address the priorities of council, reflect the goals and objectives, and include the desired range of potential changes. If there are options that you consider to be off the table, it would be useful to identify those for the community, before the community engagement. We have staff here to answer questions about all the components. We realize there is a lot of information in this packet to digest and understand. And then lastly, we just want to confirm that the council agrees with the findings from the flood analysis and is comfortable with our recommended approach.
Okay. So we're going to come back to that. So we also have the county here, and so maybe it seems like we should have you guys come up and if you want to say anything, I think we will have questions for you if you want to do that now. I don't know how late you want to be stuck here.
Well, thank you. I'm Deb Gardner, Boulder County Commissioner, and this is James Butler. Want to, how do you describe yourself?
Boulder County Building Services Design Supervisor.
There you go. Thank you. And we're really just here to answer questions and I think also to reiterate the point that we've made in the past, that in looking to develop a hub for our human services and other public-facing services, we keep looking at Alpine-Balsam as our number-one site. We really can't do what we want to do up on Iris and Broadway in the best possible way because we need to be continuing to provide those services at the same time we would be building something. So if we were to do it at Alpine-Balsam, we would need to move everyone that's working there now to some other place and then redevelop that site for a hub.
You mean at Iris?
At Iris and Broadway, yes. And so the ideal solution for us would be to build a site at Alpine-Balsam that's like our hub in Longmont, and then be able to sell the property that we have at Iris and Broadway for affordable housing development.
Can you speak at all to the synergy you would see with the city on that site? Or, you know, you mentioned the hub at Longmont. I guess, yeah. Do you have expectations around that or ideas or ambitions? Because, yeah, by the word hub, what, what would folks be getting that they wouldn't be if we were separated? Or, you know, I guess.
Sure. Well, I mean, it's totally, I think, dependent on what kind of services the city were to provide at that location. We would be providing mostly human services and workforce and those types of services. So it'd depend on what you had at the, at the city site. But I think the potential is always there for a person if they were to come and pay their utility bill, but they also needed help with SNAP or some other human service idea. James, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah. I would like to just add a couple of things. You know, we had our facilities master plan done last year, and one of the overarching goals was to consolidate our services. And so to that end, having our services on Alpine and Balsam, we're closer to our services downtown. And so that's better services for people looking for county services. It's also easier for us to maintain our facilities, having our, all of our different departments together. And it gives us more opportunities for different amenities, like large conference rooms and break rooms and that kind of stuff. So there's some efficiencies having all of our services together. And there was a question earlier about whether we could be in another building. The 120,000 square feet is pretty important to us. That's the model that we generated from here, and that is that Longmont hub. And so I know it's gone back and forth. Could we be in an 80,000-square-foot building or 100? We really would love to have 120 so we can meet our model and our goal for that Boulder hub.
Okay. We're going to come back to you, but there's a few other questions. One, I think, that is really a little bit of a stickler, is the idea of building more parking.
Yep.
And so talk to us, I'm not sure who, I mean, we're going to do a trap, it sounds like a trap, transportation district. Why wouldn't that work along with our existing parking structure so we can avoid ever building more parking?
Well, yeah, we would have to do a traffic study and parking study to figure out how much parking we actually need for our services. And just looking at how much parking we have over at the St. Frank's Hub in Longmont, which is a pretty similar size, the, the whole building's about 105,000 when you take both of those components together. And we have a lot of clients that come in for services. One of the things that we found is that the type of services, people have an expectation of whether it's pay-for-parking or not pay-for-parking. And so, for example, our health and human services facilities, people have this expectation they're coming in for something that they don't want to do, and so they don't want to pay for parking. Whether it's somebody's coming in for a building permit, it's easier for that person to have that expectation that they have to pay for two-hour parking out on the street. And so we want to measure that with our clients, because we want to provide the best opportunity for our clients to access the services that they need.
But did you, but yeah, could you, can you see an option where we, where building additional structured parking is off the, I mean, I think there's a real reluctance to do that. Is it a possibility you wouldn't have to?
I have talked to our transportation folks to say, you know, how much parking would we need? How do you do that study? And they are very much in favor of reducing our required parking floor structure much greater than the required zoning for that site. Whether that's 20, right now it's 20% or something like that? Yeah.
20%. So like, how many are we talking? Oh, oh.
It's a factor of how many square feet.
Okay.
Yeah. 120,000 square feet divided by 300 or something like that is, I don't know, off the top of my head. Sorry.
Okay.
Well, maybe as a principle, I could.
And then a factor of that. Sorry.
I could just add that we're loathe to build parking as well. And so working together to find a way to build the minimum amount of parking would be, I think, a shared goal, sounds like. And then two, the parking that we're having to build at our Kaufman site in Longmont at the hub across the street from the hub, we're building that parking in conjunction with affordable housing, and we're building the parking structure in a way so that we can convert whole floors of the parking to housing if and when we're almost certain the need for parking will be reduced for all of us, we expect. And that, so then, so now we've got, you know, two or three floors of parking planned, and at some point, we expect to be able to convert one of those floors to housing. And we're building it in a way that that's possible. So we would do the same thing here.
Okay. Another cue, the other thing that was asked was about units on the Iris site. Can you speak to even ballparks so we can get a sense?
Well, I can, I can tell you we have 17 acres, 17.7 acres up there. So we have a lot more land to work with. But it's all a factor of how much density you're going to go with. So if it's high-density, medium-density, low-density. We also have four ball fields on that site. We also have the old community hospital, which is a historic building that we would love to preserve. And, you know, I think the city comprehensive plan and the county comprehensive plan, we like to preserve buildings. So there's a lot of different factors that need to be part of the assessment of how we can meet our, our goals on that site. I can say confidently a lot more than what you can do on your site, because it's smaller.
Fair enough. Okay. Aaron and then Lisa.
All right. Thanks for coming and talking to us tonight. In terms of, I'm just wondering about potential synergies. Clearly, we would want our separate facilities fundamentally, but would there be an openness to, say, sharing some lower-use facilities? Think about a really large conference room, for example, that you certainly wouldn't need to fill every day. Do you imagine we could partner on stuff like that?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I think that's the beauty of being able to do this together, that there are things that could be shared and, yeah, and it would benefit both of us and the public.
Thanks for that. And like, another one that occurs to me would be a shuttle to downtown, like to the bus station, for example. You know, that would be, it could help reduce all of our parking counts if we could get people in from transit with the little shuttle that we co-funded, for example.
Well, and I think since you talked about transit, that's important because I think that's another reason that site is more viable to us than doing additional services up on Iris and Broadway, because the transit opportunities are not as great up there as they are at Alpine and Balsam.
Right. And then it, just the, there's the, we mentioned the idea of a land swap, or if we're working together like this, are you open to different possibilities in terms of swapping or purchasing or things like that?
I think so, particularly because we have those shared goals of how do we increase affordable housing and how do we create a place that really serves the public. And so I think, I think we should, at this point, keep all options on the table and have a robust conversation about what makes sense for both of us as entities.
Great. Thank you very much.
We have Lisa, Bob, Mary. Yeah. So I wanted to know if you could live with 80,000 square feet just. They already answered that. They already answered that. Well, he said you'd prefer, but could you have 80,000 square feet?
Not to meet the needs for our, our services that we want.
And could you live without parking?
We can definitely manage our employees and how they come to the site. It's, it's the clients that's going to be harder. So we have to really do an analysis of.
Right.
Parking is needed for our clients.
Okay. Thank you. Bob?
So I'm going to pick up where Lisa left off. So the, the existing pavilion building is about 75,000 square feet, right? And you've told us 75,000 existing, and you could add another 18,000 to make it 93. That's what you told us last meeting?
Roughly.
Roughly. And I think I heard you guys say, I'm going to get to you guys in a second. I think I heard you guys say that, subject to some flood analysis, you might be able to add an incremental 80,000 square feet of office in the northeast quarter of that parcel. In other words, at the corner of Balsam and Broadway. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So 80 plus 75 equals 155. So that would seem to give you guys the 120 you're looking for, yeah. So do you have any?
He really doesn't want us to occupy the pavilion.
Yeah. I'm getting there. So you guys have any, like, like, big heartburn about being on Broadway? Would that be, as long as you got 120,000 square feet and all the parking needed, would you guys be cool with that?
Well, the, the way that the St. Frank's Hub works in Longmont is, it's a public-facing building where all of the services are provided in a central atrium space.
Yeah.
And I don't know the buildings that you're talking about and whether or not that would meet the functional needs of how we want those services to be delivered.
Well, one would be bespoke. You would build it any way you want. There'd be two buildings.
We want it all together.
Right. Okay. Well, we'll take you over there, maybe then we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
And then getting back to parking, and then I do want to come back to Broadway and Iris. So we have a 401-stall parking garage. Again, assuming that we weren't on that site, the site we just talked about, you guys were on Broadway in that two acres along Broadway, would 401 spaces do the trick for you guys?
I would assume. We'd have to do a parking analysis.
Yeah. I thought, I heard, I thought I heard you say something like 300 square feet per parking spot. per parking spot, so 120 divided by 300 is 400, so.
Yep.
Zip code, zip code, okay?
With the gut check, that sounds okay.
Okay, good. So let's shoot up to Broadway and Iris. I get the density question, we can do that math, but of that 17.7 acres, how many acres are taken up by the ball fields, roughly?
Roughly half of it.
Roughly half of it. So that leaves about nine acres. Okay. And then how much of it is taken up by the Historic Hospital? An acre or so?
Yeah, the half acre.
Okay. So can we assume, I know there's going to be open space and maybe internal roads and whatnot, but we could assume that there's maybe roughly eight-ish acres? I'm just trying to do some rough math, eight-ish acres up there that would be potentially buildable?
There is also flood.
More than two, more than two, right? More than two, less than 10?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm just, again, I'm trying to get order back, because to Sam's question, we're trying to figure out, is this a good deal for us? And we're trying 2/4, and I don't know what X is, so I don't know, I assume that X is bigger than 2, but I don't know what it is. It feels like it's sort of eight-ish, does that kind of, like, in the zip code?
And then, when you're talking about the site on the western portion of the site, because you're closer to Iris and Broadway, and that's kind of a busier neighborhood, if you were to look at a higher-density housing, I could see it more towards those streets. Whereas I could see, you know, with a lower-density housing in neighborhood on the north side, you'd probably want to replicate that and scale it, kind of like you were talking about the different scales.
And that old hospital kind of sits right smack in the middle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it could be a great community center or daycare center.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
Sorry, Mary and then Cindy. And then Aaron.
So I'm going to pick up where Aaron left off with respect to trying to figure out where your clients come from. So you have a hub in Longmont that provides a variety of services. Would the hub that you're hoping to build in Boulder have, provide that same variety, or would it be a different set of services? So it would be, I guess what I'm asking is, do the two hubs target different clients coming from different geographic locations?
Yes. They're the same demographics of clients, looking for the same services, but they come from different geography, they're different areas.
So you...
Southeast County mostly.
Okay, so then you would be looking at Northwest County for this hub. Is that correct?
Well, the clients that are coming are in Boulder and Southeast County.
Oh, okay, okay. And so, based on that, would, you said you would do an analysis of where folks are coming from. And based on that, would you look at the transit availability to determine your need for parking? And how would you go about doing that, to flesh that out? Because I would imagine that many folks, you know, they, it seems like hard to know whether they're using transit or not, or they're coming in personal cars. And how would you go about doing that kind of analysis to know?
So we can survey our clients and we can survey our employees. Our employees, about 10% use our ecopasses. We actually did a pretty good survey about seven years ago for our employees back in Longmont, and it was surprising to me how many people do not live in Longmont. A lot of our employees would be looking for affordable housing options, and so that's why it's also a good value for us, a good thing to have affordable housing in Boulder, so that our employees can work and live in the same town. So a lot of them drive. They don't have access to the RTD, that is, the bus routes that are available when they live in the city proper.
And, and did you survey the clients as well?
We did, yeah.
And what did you find out there?
That was a long time ago. There was, there was a lot of clients that get driven and walk, a lot of them take mass transit, a lot more than our employees. So that's why it's very important for us to be closer to bus routes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Thank you. So all this, remind us, it's really helpful for us to try and get a sense of what you're thinking, to make sure it's reflected in these options. And then we're going to, we don't have to hold forth on what we think about them, we just need to make sure they're clear. So with that in mind, we have, were you done? Sorry.
I'm done.
We have Cindy, and then maybe you were done.
And maybe you've said this, but how many trips a day does the Longmont hub generate? Is that, did you say?
I don't know.
That's something that I would be interested in knowing as well.
Well, and, yeah.
I mean, maybe I just add that, yeah, those kinds of details, I think we can certainly get the data on it and do it, again, specifically for a potential Boulder hub as well by surveying our clients that are currently going to Iris and Broadway. I think, you know, to the bigger question that Mayor Jones is talking about, when we were looking at the options, obviously, we prefer to have, to continue to have option five included and option seven as well, right, or just option five? Any of the options after, yeah.
I think it's five.
Yeah, five, because that gives us the option to be able to have a hub there at that site. The other options with the additional emphasis on housing doesn't really offer the opportunity for this kind of services at that location.
All right. Aaron, you had one bullet?
One last thing. So are you all planning to stay in your facility along 13th Street that's just kind of across the street? Is that a long-term hold for you guys?
Yes.
Okay, because then it's one of the differences in some of these plans was the zoning on, just on your parcel there. Do you care much what that's zoned?
No, that building is meeting our needs for our Transportation Department.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a process question?
I have a process question for you guys, because as you saw in the earlier slides, we're hoping to get this area plan approved by September. It sounds like we got a lot of work to do between us, because we got a lot of, I don't know's. And are you guys going to be, I mean, we're going to be deciding on one of these things in September. Are you guys going to be fully ready to commit both as to this site and as to Iris and Broadway by September? Is that within the realm of possibility for you guys?
Well, I think, actually, we'd rather it happened sooner. So I think we're good with September.
We've got a lot of work to do then, don't we? Okay.
Okay, is there anything else you wanted to say that we haven't asked? And then we're going to answer these questions, but...
I don't think so, but thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to share our thoughts with you.
Well, we appreciate you coming. It's really helpful to talk in person.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so in terms of what we need to do tonight, it doesn't matter what we think our personal opinions are, it matters, right now, it matters of whether do we have the options, do we think the options are working, to go out to public. So this is all about teeing them up for the public discussion and whether, okay, so that's, just want to clarify that. We have a process question.
Well, it's a fact question for staff. Well, I guess it's a process question. When will you have the, remember, we had a lot of questions about the renovation of the pavilion building and the cost of the pavilion building? When will you have that information for us?
We're going to bring that information back in August. We have a city facilities master plan conversation right around the same time as the Alpine-Balsam conversation, so we're going to bring it back then.
Okay.
Okay, so question number one, can you put up the revised area plan goals and objectives that you want us to weigh forth on? Or are they somewhere where we can look at them and...
I mentioned they're...
Which page are they on?
They are on, I think they're...
I have a slide.
Second attachment. These are the goals, the one in the packet has a little bit more detail with the objectives.
I think they work, it might be helpful on local government to note that, maybe in parentheses, city, county, city or county, or and county, and/or county, is what is being talked about in local government, so that there's options there for consideration. And I do think we should put a little asterisk there, because if we do a hub here, it frees up potential for land elsewhere. Otherwise, the trade-off doesn't make sense. It only makes sense because there would be the potential for that. So I just think, again, if we're going to get people's input, people will need to know there'd be less housing here, but the potential for more housing up the street or a mile away, so we can actually get people's take on that.
I think the and/or, to tie onto that, the and/or is really important, because if we say and, then we're just, we just noted that option five, right? We've taken all the other options off the table, so I think it's and/or, it's either us or the county or both of us. That way, it keeps all these options alive.
Yeah, however best to say that. Yep.
I don't, so, is this the time to say something?
About that. What do you think about that?
Okay, about that, I have difficulty picking any one of these options, because I don't think they've been, like, this one, number five, gives such an emphasis to one thing and doesn't really take into consideration, for example, incorporate design and character that it respects and enhances the neighborhood. So I have, to me, looking at all of these, I mean, I want to, so with community engagement, I want to know, did the staff read the survey that the neighborhood group did with their 538 or 78 responses?
We did.
So that's the kind of thing that I would like to hear more of in terms, before making something that we just sort of fit on top of this area, without knowing whether or not it actually does fit into, like, our Boulder Valley comp plans regarding neighborhood areas. And furthermore, with the transportation options, last time we were told that transportation was going to change, there were, there needed to be some big improvements on Broadway if such-and-such happened or such-and-such didn't happen. And mostly, it was the city, these kind, this option five with this intense civic use. And with the intense civic use, if the county is there, will the city be there also? So there are other places for the city to go. There've been some really great suggestions. So I'm just having some difficulty with this. And with the transportation, I also need to say just one more thing, and then I'll be quiet. That this, one of the staff reports said that there won't be as many trips as the hospital generated. So that shouldn't be an issue with any of the kind of build-out that was going to be happening here. However, this is part of my neighborhood in the sense that it's a shopping area that I've been going to since old Mr. What's-his-name owned Ideal Market. And so, so I've been in all kinds of vehicles, going past the hospital, seeing what's happening, and there has never been the kind of traffic congestion there is today between Broadway and Ninth Street on Balsam. If you're trying to make a left turn, you can wait through three easily, traffic signals at certain times of the day.
Okay. So noted, so.
Transportation issues, we need to know more about that before we start shoving more in there.
Okay. I have Lisa and Sam, and I want us to look at that slide and make any changes you want to make to that slide. And Aaron, okay? Is there anything? Sorry, we're going to move us along.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to speak to urban design, okay? That's number one.
Okay.
And just from urban design, and that's how I'm going to approach this project in terms of building mass, bulk, form, design, all of, and uses. And I think if you look at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5 definitely doesn't respect good urban design.
Okay, we don't care what you think about the options.
Okay, okay, well, you're asking, do we...
Are these goals and objectives good for framing the project?
Yes, they are, but, okay.
But they're presented.
But I think they could be presented better.
Okay, so we're going to, clearly, we need to dive deep on these options. Anything else on this slide? I have Sam and Aaron in the queue.
I think these are the right goals. I mean, what Lisa and Cindy are talking about was kind of, do these different scenarios meet the goals? That's a perfectly fair question, but I think these are the right goals, and I agree with the caveat that number four needs to say city and/or county. And so, except with that minor change, I think the rest of these are good.
Aaron?
So I agree with that on number four. One, my one comment would be that one of the threads I'm trying to make sure stays through this process is an intent to keep the Ideal and Community Plaza shopping centers and not tear them down and build big new buildings in their place. So I wonder if you might tweak the language on number one a little bit to reflect that, you know, so something, something about, you know, retaining and enhancing, you know, just to carry that through.
Do people kind of nod on that one?
I have a further suggestion along those lines. Perhaps that could be addressed by adding an item under Land Use and Urban Design that would say, preserve historic structures where applicable.
Like the hospital?
No, that's...
I wasn't going to let that one go.
Well, historic preservation, I guess, anyway, yeah, something like that.
Yeah, Mary, if I can, what we have on the screen is just some of the goal statements. It doesn't include the objective bullets that are in your memo. One of the bullets under that section says to protect historic qualities and encourage adaptive reuse of historic properties.
Where's it? So what page, what page could we...
Let me pull up a page number, I don't have it on my printed copy.
140.
140.
Okay, all right. We're going to keep moving to the next question, then. I think, are people good with that, then? Yes. We're going to get to the options.
I have to ask a question.
We're going to get to the options.
I have to ask, how, these are such generalized questions. Enhance the neighborhood center at Alpine-Balsam to support a vibrant mix of uses for community life. It does that. How are you going to enhance it to make it do more so? I mean, those are the kinds of questions I have. When you have goals and objectives, how are they accomplished? Not just it's a great goal. Of course, it's a great goal, but it is that way. What are you going to do to make it better?
Some of the retail along Broadways could use some enhancing.
I'm thinking about the, what Aaron was just talking about.
Well, just the way it's, is that there are certain bits that are very successful that you want to preserve and maybe enhance just a little bit, but then there are others, if you think about the east side of Broadway, south of north, that could really use new buildings or rehabilitation or something that needs some enhancing, you know, so...
So that's, I think, you got that?
I think that is that part.
Okay.
That's the area plan, yeah.
Okay, so let's go to number two. Draft area components and options. So this is you, Cindy? Options. So we're looking at the options, and, yep, Mary. Do we want, well, first off, does anybody want to, one of the questions, did you want to get rid of any of the options?
Two.
Okay, Mary.
So, I will propose that. My answer to that is yes, and I will preface it by saying that tonight, we had some folks come and speak to us about basically the two extremes. Some folks that would probably prefer option one, and then folks that clearly preferred option three. And those are at either end of the spectrum. And I, part of what I would hope would happen through community engagement would be that people would begin to compromise and come together on some sort of option that was more in the middle. So the memo also said that there was not consensus on the density. So what I would like to propose, based on what we heard tonight, what the memo said, is to remove options one and options three. And so we, and option three. We can still keep the option that talks about potentially having the county hub on the site, and then the other option that is basically saying, where do we put the density? But I think part of our job is to try and start the conversation of bringing people to a compromise. And so that's, what I would propose to do that is to remove option one and option three.
Can I call a queue with you on that? Because I hear where you're going, and I, on one hand, I appreciate that, on the other hand, does that mean that the people that just came and testified for one and three feel like, wow, we were just not heard?
Well, I think...
You know, like, that's one of the...
Well, and I, and to that, I would respond as, we did hear you. And, and I think that that's part of our job, is to make that tough decision. And, and I think to keep option, unless, unless keeping option one and option three, and I guess this is a question for staff, is providing examples of things that could fit into the other options. I don't know to what extent that's true, but, but I think that part of it is for us to say, we're going to start to bring you together, and, and to do that is we're not going to lead either extreme opinion, think that they will prevail in the end, because our hope is that it'll be somewhere in the middle.
Okay. Thoughts on that, Mary, or by, and then Lisa?
So I appreciate what you're saying, Mary, and I do think that both sides need to kind of work together, but I guess I'm really... But I guess I'm really stuck on the fact that, I understand it wasn't a statistically valid survey, but this neighborhood group got 500 and almost 50 respondents when the city only got 100. And if you look at it overwhelmingly, and again, maybe it's the way the questions are asked, but overwhelmingly, these 537 people preferred low density. And so, again, I get that we're not catering to just a neighborhood, but I think that the option, at least one, needs to be left on the table, because we're already hearing from community engagement that people had to go do themselves because they didn't feel like they were heard by the city. So, I mean, if we're going to leave one on, then I think it would be fair to leave three on as well, because then I think it starts getting cited. But I mean, I really hope, and I don't, I know this might not be on topic, but I'm curious how robust we're going to be having engagement, because, again, 100 people from the last time wasn't robust to me when the neighborhood went and did 537 of their own accord, just in their little neighborhood. So that's kind of where I'm sitting.
Okay. Lisa, then Sam, then Bob.
Now I'm going back to urban design. So I would take options one and five off. And I think, I'll speak to option five. And option five, I think bringing, what do you call it? Mixed-use business back into the neighborhood on Balsam is totally inappropriate. That back block, I really don't like it.
I'm sorry, which block is that, Lisa?
It's, if you look at, but, option five, and if you look at kind of the middle part of Balsam, it just doesn't work to have a tall building, an office building, right across the street from a bunch of, of houses. And I don't care whether they're apartments or whether they're single-family houses, but it is incongruent. It doesn't work. And basic urban design would say like, unlike, across the street, especially when you have a major street like Broadway coming down there. And we have, and staff has done that, where you have the same use facing each other on Broadway. But if we came down Balsam, it's all housing for the most part.
It's a hospital right now.
Well, yeah, but, but, you know, I just, it's a low building, too, and it's mostly, this part of the hospital is relatively low. But anyway, I just, I just think if you want to take down the hospital, which I'm the only one who doesn't, I feel like then do it right and do your urban design right. And so I kind of liked where we were back in February, where our staff prepared a bunch of kind of, I don't know what you call these diagrams, but where you had along Broadway. I look at this, our site, as, not in isolation, but I look at it as kind of six blocks. You know, it's got the east, east, or let's just look at it in three blocks. The east block, the middle block, and the west block. The west block is going to be housing. We have housing back, back there. It faces housing on Ninth and, and what is that? Alpine. It faces housing across Broadway. Then the middle block-
Hey, so, in the interest of time, I get that you don't like option five, but just, just so we get that, you'd like us to remove it?
Uh huh.
Okay. I'm just collecting opinions on whether we want to remove. So let's just, you want to take out five, you take out one and three, you don't want to-
And I would keep, so I can be positive.
Yep.
I would keep two, three, and four.
Okay. Bob. Oh, I'm sorry, Sam.
I'm pretty close to where Mary is on this. I think that these are all interesting to talk about, but I don't think that we're going to, to spend $40 million to do, essentially, keep it the way it is and take the hospital down and have some city offices. I think we're looking for housing as a component of this as well. And I, you know, I understand that the county needs 120,000 square feet, but I'm not sure that that means they need the whole central block. So one of the reasons I want to keep five on the table is to have staff explore with the county how we could do, you know, the, the fit between the pavilion building, which I'm in favor of being city offices, and whatever the county needs. And if we can leave part of that central block in option five clear for housing and minimize the parking that was imagined to go in there, then I think five could provide us with both a hub as well as housing. And I think two and four are both interesting, you know, they both have elements that I think would enhance the, the neighborhood services there. And I think the, the medium-density type of, of housing, as it, as it goes back towards Ninth Street, is good in both options two and four. So I'm kind of where Mary is. I would keep two, four, and five going forward. And, you know, those aren't fixed points, right? You can, you can massage each of them based on what we hear back from the public, you know. It could be a little more housing, could be a little less density, but I think those are good starting points. I don't think status quo is going to work, and I don't think we want to, three, I think, takes the hub idea completely away. So, you're right.
Okay. Bob?
I find myself in agreement with Lisa.
Get rid of one and five?
Well, I'm, I'm more ambivalent about one. I, I can't see myself ultimately supporting one, but I wouldn't, I don't care if it comes off the table or not. But five is the one I just hate the worst, and I'll tell you why. First, I agree with Lisa on, on design. I agree that that's too much office jammed into a neighborhood. I know there's a hospital there now, but I think we're trying to make it more neighborhood-y. We don't know what it's going to cost, we won't know for another two months, sounds like, what the cost of the renovation of the pavilion building, you know. So I'm still not convinced that that's going to be city offices until I see the numbers. We don't know how much parking the county needs. We don't know if the county can use the eastern third. I mean, I, I might be supportive of that, depending on what we get at Broadway and Iris, but we, county doesn't, hasn't even looked at it, it sounds like. I've, I've yet to be convinced that there's truly synergy between the county and the city. Maybe there's a receptionist, but I haven't heard, like, what exactly overlap there's going to be between us, and that's something that the city staff needs to rig back. I don't know what other options there are for the city if we don't go the pavilion building. I'd like those to be explored. I don't know where we're going to get at Broadway and Iris. Are we going to get eight acres? Are we going to get something else? When is, when are we going to have it? And as I look at option eight, it's, it provides us with as little as 30 units of housing. Is that why we spent $40 million to get 30 units of housing? I know we need office space, but I think we need to explore all the office space opportunities in town, not just this one little corner. If the county wants it, great, but I'm not convinced that that's where we need to go. And I'll just make a general comment. I am, given all the work that's got to happen here, I am really, really skeptical this can happen by September. If it was just us, maybe, but, but we haven't progressed, on a scale of one to 10, we're like at a two with the county. I know there's interest there, but, but there's so much due diligence that's got to happen on Iris and Broadway and about fit for here. So I just want us to be really realistic about the schedule. I'd take five off.
Erin.
Well, we can be all scattershot. So, well, I guess, you know, Bob, not, not to just disagree with you, but since you just spoke, and I'll just offer, I think five is worth keeping on the table. I think as one of our options, I mean, I think the thing that we can do here is go out to the public with, and say that these are parts and pieces, you know, that, that it's not like you have to just take five or just take three, you know, or just one, you know, you can bring in different bits of different options, and I think we should be open about that. And I think we should communicate that very clearly in our public outreach through this process. So, I mean, I hear you about maybe taking one and three off the table. I could imagine that as long as you made it clear that, that you could slot in, you know, different pieces from different options in that. But I think it's worth continuing to talk to the county. I mean, I wouldn't, I see that in number five, that it says the site would only have 30 to 90 units. The, the pavilion building doesn't occupy nearly that full eastern third. It seems like if we were to partner with the county, I would imagine still being able to get housing on almost half of that eastern two-thirds, certainly a third of it, and with a lot of potential options there. So, so I think we could still get some housing there. But if we do partner with the county, we got to do it in such a way that we get, you know, a really great affordable housing package up at Iris and Broadway, and, which I think is feasible. I mean, I think with two public agencies working together with similar goals, I think we could potentially make something great happen there. So I want to keep that option on the table, and, but really, I'm just willing to go out to the community with what we've got here for the next steps.
Cindy?
So, I agree with Erin about wanting to see what kind of synergy we have with the county and with Bob in saying that we, we just need to know a lot more. And it seems that this, as well as a bunch of other things, we're just being put on this really fast timeline for too many things that aren't going to happen that quickly if we do our due diligence. I could see taking five off the table for the same reason. I don't know, I have some, I also don't like to see that much business being put into this plan. And agree, Erin, with what you said about using less of it on that top part of the city site, which is why I said what I said at the beginning. I mean, they're pieces of each of these. I agree with Mary, however, that I would take off option three. I think that's just too intense. It's too dense, and it just doesn't, if we're talking about the comp plan preservation aspects having to do with neighborhoods, it just doesn't do it. And one of the questions, and maybe someone's answered this already, too, is what kind of density does the Holiday neighborhood have?
MRX.
Is that MRX? And how does that fit with any of these options that we have been presented with us in terms of housing and business? That's sort of there and what we've identified that we might be doing with the county?
I mean, can I, do you mind if I speak a little bit of this, since I, since I live there? Just, the, you know, there's a park in the middle of Holiday, and, which is a little different, you know, so, because the park here would be in North Boulder Park. But like, the block that I live in is 20 dwelling units per acre, so that's in the high-density range. There are other blocks that are maybe more like 12 units per acre that are on the, maybe high end of medium density. So the zoning is RMX2, which is a media, a mixed density, but since you have affordable housing on site, you can double the density and get into those high-density levels. So it's, it's a mix.
So I was just going to say, it might be helpful when we take these kinds of things to the people for commentary, that we have some kind of on-the-ground instead of just these abstractions.
I agree.
Mm-hmm.
With examples, of photographs. I, I think, and we'll just pause for a moment and just go there, that there's ways, I think these are so hard to, they're not evocative, they're like, wait, what is purple? Okay, wait, black? It's really hard, these are what planners use, but it's really hard, I think, to get public opinion. So I guess, there's apartment buildings nearby, the park? Okay, that's, what is that? Is that, is that a, get some examples of pitch roof, second and third and fourth, so those are the pictures. Okay, and that would go here? And that, just, just so that people can, can relate to it? And I think that would make a world of difference. I, I feel the same way about, well, what the heck is a hub? Well, we know what they look like, maybe.
What do they do there? How many people?
Yeah, so I guess I, I feel like we need to, to illustrate options so people can feel what they would feel like. Okay, so, and I'm sure that other people have suggestions along those lines. We haven't quite finished about options, but let's pause and do something helpful. Go ahead. Who wants to weigh in on that? Is that what you wanted to weigh in on? Or do we want to-
No, other than to agree with you, that some examples would be really great, what comes to mind, but I don't know within the timeline might work. The, the fly-through that was done for the Civic Park was really helpful to visualize. But I understand that that requires a lot of work, although Yvette did it in a week, but some, something that is that kind of, like you said, evocative, you know, that-
Right. Though we have 3D of like our city as it exists now, so you can like zoom in if you were like Google mapping it and get a sense, okay, here it is now, if we, I don't know. Okay.
Make a process suggestion, because we, we're all over the place. Can we-
We're going to go back to options. I just wanted to pause and go, okay. So-
And the one other thing on the maps is, I just, I said some of this before, but just in terms of the areas of change, I mean, I, I'd probably scrap that entirely or just, I, I think, there are areas that might change and areas that wouldn't, but it's not these big red blobs. Yeah.
Right, so if you, if we're talking about changing zoning or not, okay, then put some hash marks about, do we want to change zoning in these other areas, but, yeah.
People will see their apartment building and be like, what do you mean it's changing? Are they going to tear it down?
Okay, and to the extent that we're talking about areas of change, though, the, the time component has got to be there. So we get that. Okay, so going back-
And I agree with that, 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 over how much time?
Yeah.
Over the next 20 years, we expect, or-
50.
Or 50, or whatever.
Okay. Regarding options, I think, I feel pretty strongly we want to have four and five, because they have very different concepts, and I want to know what people think about them. I also think, just out of courtesy to the county, they put something on the table, let's see what people think. There's a chance that we could really get something amazing at Iris, and we should, we are obligated, I think, to at least explore it. We can decide, it's not worth it, that's fine. But to involve the public in that discussion makes sense to me. And then on the housing one, some people, the problem with having lots of options is, is it's confusing to people, but the idea that we want to have a housing, an option that stresses housing, and it's depending on how much, I mean, that's basically, we want to have a conversation about housing. And we could do it with one, two, and three, I'm fine with that. Some people would rather have an option, but with the idea that there's intensities and types. So as long as, what we want to do is provoke that, that conversation about intensities and types in a meaningful way. And I don't really care how we do that.
Well, the thing about one is that it, it doesn't meet objective number five that we saw about affordable housing. And, and that seems to be something that everyone agrees on, is to have affordable housing, and, and one just doesn't meet that objective. So I'll just throw that up.
I'm just, I'm just going to get an observation, you and then I, I want to get a suggestion for process. First of all, I just want to observe that, that, that if I was taken off the table at some point in time, that doesn't exclude the county, because I think four and three, and they all include the county. What it excludes is, excludes the city, is what it would exclude. In other words, option four, for example, could be the county, but just the county alone.
Okay, you're the only person that's talking about a hub that doesn't involve the city.
Well, then let me talk, too.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, all right, okay, then I, that's good to know. You didn't mention it before, but you don't have to talk about it.
Well, let me just make us a process suggestion. Can we do like a little straw poll and see if we get like five or maybe six votes on eliminating? Because it sounds like one is like, is, a lot of people are not real big fans of one. So can we see if we have five or six votes to eliminate, you know, an option, maybe two options, but, but it would start with one? Because I've heard one mentioned most often.
Well, why don't we just go through and see? If you want to eliminate, well, just vote on, who wants to eliminate something?
Right.
And if you get a majority vote, I'm not sure there's a great way of doing this, but that's all you need to do is-
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. All right, starting with one?
Well, so actually, I like what you said, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't eliminate anything, but if we're eliminating something, I would eliminate one. So like-
Okay, that's how I feel.
With a threshold concept.
I wouldn't eliminate, but if I was going to, I probably would eliminate one.
You don't have to vote for anything. You can, you can-
May I ask staff a question?
Yep.
Are you hoping that we take some options off the table before you go to the public, or would you rather go with all five? Because if you are comfortable going with all five, I think that's probably what the consensus will end up being.
I think that if there's an option that you don't think that you would want to have considered in the area plan, then you should let us know so that we can convey that to the community.
Okay. Go for it, then, yeah.
So, I mean, that sounds like some guidance to us, that if we, like, I don't think I could support one.
Yeah.
Right, if, even if it came through the process, it doesn't meet the fundamental goal of affordable housing, and so I would suggest we take it off.
Okay, well, put like that, then. How many people would eliminate one? Do you want to speak to it before we vote? Yep, go ahead.
Do you guys have a number of how many units on site that we would need to reach affordable housing? Because right now, one at the max was at 105, and you're saying that that doesn't reach affordable housing, so, but it looks like 170 could, so do we have a, 170 is our magic number?
Mr. Kurt, come on it.
Okay, so the lowest number of houses that we can have on site is 170 in order to have affordable housing?
Yeah, I would see, so Kurt Fernhauer, Director for Housing and Human Services, that's the number that we put in there, but also knowing that there's other factors that could come, that could play into that. But as a, as a general concept, we want to use that as a starting point, hopefully to be helpful towards you.
Great. Thanks, Kurt.
Okay. That is helpful. Okay. How many people would then like to eliminate option one? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and you would not. Okay. So I think we've eliminated option one. How many people want to eliminate option two? Nobody? Option three? One, one, two, three, four.
Is it four? Who's the four?
Cindy.
Oh. So, right. It means we leave it on.
And let me just clarify that, like, on option three, the part that has high-density housing along Ninth Street, I totally disagree with that piece of it. So there are other things that I think have promise in that plan, but I just, I want to get on record. I don't think it's perfect.
Right. To be clear, I wouldn't want to accept any of these options as-is. This is just what we think helps structure the conversation. Okay? Okay. Option four? Does anybody want to get rid of option four? Okay, option five? One, two, three? Okay. So it looks like we just get rid of one. And, okay. Three, I'm assuming we're not going to add any new options? Let's not do that. Let's not do that? Okay. We talked, we already had a lot of questions. I think, let me just sum up where I heard, is urban design is going to matter, and that I think, I'll just reiterate what I said, is getting a sense for people's feel about the types would be most helpful. You heard a lot about transportation. I think the one thing I would dwell into that is understanding the TDM district. Certainly, for option five, we need to understand where the county's coming from and whether we can avoid structured, more structured parking. And I think there's a lot of, I think one of the reasons people don't necessarily believe us on transportation always is, again, it doesn't feel like it's accurate. And so I think the deal is, traffic overall has increased. The number of trips coming from the hospital used to be more, but overall, there's more traffic in the city going up and down Broadway and up and down Ninth Street. So I guess, to me, the context of transportation matters, because the world has changed, right? So that's why it's hard to turn. It was probably, it'd be even harder to turn if the hospital was open and we had current transportation, I mean. So anyhow, I guess, you need to ground it in reality, and just saying it won't be worse than the way it used to be, it doesn't really feel accurate to people.
We can delve into that a little bit more with our staff and with the consultants, because they did look at trip counts and intersections, and that nine different intersections in the area and how they function. But we can definitely delve into that information a little bit more and be able to portray it for folks.
Okay. And also, the things that people are going to want to know, well, I think when you take it out, again, you're painting pictures about what it would feel like and how we would mitigate certain things, right? So, again, if you point to the transportation treatment that exists somewhere in the city and say, we would put one of these in here to help deal with the turning, or whatever it is, again, people can visualize. Yes.
So, looking at these maps and looking at these colors, I mean, again, I would just like to reiterate my, otherwise I'm going to change my vote on number one, that looking at these other options doesn't mean that there can't be low and medium density in there. Is that correct? Everyone up here agree?
Yep.
So that just because we've taken the colors off on option one doesn't mean that those same colors can't go in these other, all these other units? Just so people understand, we all, I hope, agree with that.
I think what we said is, we would like to hit a number of units such that we can get affordable housing.
And have affordable housing, which the neighborhood has also said that they're in favor of.
I think that's mostly what we said.
Could I add one? Are we on three yet?
Oh, yeah, we are whipping through three.
Okay, well, okay. So I do want to make a comment with respect to three, and I don't know, maybe perhaps in the first bullet it would fit under, which is to use the urban design principle that you go from high intensity to lower intensity, and that you would feather down as you go west. And that's, and that's something that option three doesn't do, which is why I thought that it should come off. But.
Okay, there's, Erin's next. Are you going to speak to that?
Yeah, I was. This is actually what I was going to speak to, thanks, Mary. And I, I mean, I wonder if we can get that principle into the goals and objectives somewhere? Because, I mean, we've been talking about it from the first time that I remember us talking about this site, is that, oh, well, you'd start with more intense along Broadway, and then as you hit Ninth Street, you would have a lower intensity, shorter building. So can we just write that in there somewhere?
Yeah, we've got a little bit in there about that tallest building should be along Broadway, but we can flush that out further.
I think that'd be helpful. And then the other thing I'd say is that I.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Cascading density.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. And then the other thing is that I really liked the idea that you were talking about, about the height map that we would eventually put together, so kind of taking the height bit of the form-based code. And I think it's, would be helpful to talk to people about that, to say, you know what? We can write into this plan that this bit over here can't be over 33 feet tall, you know? We can write into this bit that it'll have varying reforms, you know, so, and maybe solicit some ideas around that. But I think if people are aware, because, you know, I think in, currently, the way Boulder's site review process works, there's a little bit of the roll of the dice. You don't know exactly what the building's going to look like when, until development plan comes in and gets approved. So if we can tell people, hey, we actually can specify building forms and heights in this area plan, and let's get some feedback on it, I think that could help.
Lisa, and then Sam.
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment on cascading densities, and I agree with that. And I said, I think in February, I think if we could deal with building form and mass and scale and the design, I think that's better than putting labels on as low density and high. And I don't, low, medium, and high. And I don't think that helps the discussion. And.
I agree.
And so, you know, I think if we can just stick with the urban form, I mean, that's what we did up in North Boulder in the sub-community plan. We really never got into the densities, except that we wanted some higher densities, but we were dealing with building form, height, mass, and scale. So I think that's important. And so when I went for three, I didn't see it as necessarily greater than what would be in mid-block. You know, I've always thought of it as cascading.
Okay. Sam, then Cindy, and then we'll see what else we want to say.
So just a comment, I think two, four, and five all had that element. If you kind of squint your eyes and look at the way that the intensities laid out, those all seem to shade back to less intense.
Five doesn't.
Well, I think five would be reconfigured. I mean, I don't think that entire middle block is needed for the county, but we'll find out. Staff will tell us that. The other piece that I just want to emphasize is, I think when we have five summarized the way it is, it doesn't give credit for what might be able to happen at Iris and Broadway as far as housing and affordable housing go. So I would just comment that when these are taken out to the public, five needs to have an asterisk or, you know, another category of housing that talks about what is off-site, but which could be created, because five is what we go forward with.
I agree with that. Anybody disagree with that? Okay. Well, you don't like five, but Cindy?
Well, I wanted to comment about that as well, and say that that should be true of any of the options. Again, that what happens up on Broadway and Iris could, could affect how, I don't want to use the word dense, but how much density is on the site that we're looking at. So, or the.
Well, only in that option, otherwise.
But, or you could say in that option in the next one, or.
Oh, if you didn't have the city.
Let me explain that. I want to help Cindy here, because we're talking about $700 per square foot for this pavilion building. That's the number we heard last time we met. I'm going to guess that we could build city offices for $700 per square foot at Broadway and Iris. So, I mean, this is all interchangeable. I mean, it doesn't have to be all city offices here and housing up there. I mean, there's builders out there who will build those office buildings for less than $700 per square foot.
Wait, we already debunked that that was not the right number to be.
We haven't heard, we haven't heard an alternate number.
And maybe there's existing buildings that we could put the offices.
Okay. All right. We're going to. I didn't get to finish. That was just the first part of mine, because the second part was going to be that I agree with Bob, and it sounds like Lisa may agree, too, that the city, I would like to see the staff explore, looking for, at other options, other places to put the city offices. There are many good reasons not to necessarily locate them here at Broadway and.
Will that come up in July? Or what's going to come up in July at our facilities management?
It's in the, in August, the City Facilities Master Plan. That's where we're going to talk about where should government live in Boulder.
Okay. With different kinds of options, Chris, for where they may be, and changing demographics and.
I'm looking at Michelle a little bit in terms of the options of what we'll include in that conversation in August.
Hi, Michelle Crane, City Facilities, Design and Construction Manager. So that is our intent, is to give a much broader perspective across the city. Where's ideal city locations to serve our community, to consolidate staff, and present those options.
And cost, as well as Bob has been.
Well, yes, and have that comparison, cost analysis, as well as comparison with developer costs for other buildings.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah, and I would like to add it on, because before we had this, we had plans for the East Bookends, so I'd like to know about that. And then I'd like to know about some, well, we can bring this up later, but there's existing office buildings or existing buildings that perhaps we could use.
That is really what we're looking at comprehensively, because even the pavilion doesn't accommodate everything we've talked about much earlier when we were looking at the civic area. So it's looking at different consolidation scenarios and where that might be optimal. One consideration is, you know, the presence on the western edge of town, which is one thing we're considering. But we want to look at that with all the factors. And so that's the intent of the Facilities Master Plan.
And what also would be really helpful, Michelle, is if we had a better breakdown, and I don't know how granular you can do this, but a better breakdown of where our employees are coming from. And so, I mean, I think right now, more than half of our employees don't live in Boulder. And so I don't know where exactly they're coming from. And so I'd like to have a better understanding of that and what might be better.
We want to understand where our employees are coming from, how that impacts where they arrive, but also where our customers are being served. And so that is that kind of broad look across the city. And, you know, is there a dual hub scenario that makes a lot of sense, as well as the cost breakdowns?
Right. Right, and that's good. The nearby wants in. We got to go, you guys. We have another 90-minute conversation.
Mine's just really quick in terms of engagement with the community. So I get that you guys don't have crystal balls and you can't tell me who is all going to answer, but just again, from the amount of people that we heard from that knew nothing about the project, and now it sounds like they're pretty much on board and have the word out, do you guys have different ways that you're going to be engaging to make sure that hopefully we cover a little bit more, or get a little more interaction?
Our intent is to offer various venues, various times, online engagement as well. So, you know, we try to do our best to offer different things that can meet different people's needs, because we certainly want to offer everyone the opportunity to weigh in and understand these options and to give us their feedback.
Great. Thanks, guys.
We work hard for that.
Any other thoughts on community engagement? Do we? Okay, good. Flood. I will say, I appreciate you guys getting to where you ended up. I'm glad we're not going to decimate North Boulder Park, nor try to solve all the flood mitigation for that side of the city on a site that, then we hit a 10-year straw. That was a very helpful discussion last time around, so I appreciate where we've ended up. Other thoughts on flood?
Agree.
Agree.
Good job. Okay. Was that the end of the questions? Okay, I know I'm pushing us, but we still have many issues ahead tonight.
I just want to thank you for the sheets.
Oh, yes.
Found them extremely helpful.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
But I still hope you use different sheets at the public.
Yeah.
Okay. I liked them.
On that moment, the Attachment C offered a lot more of the height maps, as well as the prototypes and some more of the imagery. So we'll be building on those materials now that we have a little more sense of where this, where you guys wanted to go.
Sweet. Okay. Anything else? Thank you so much. I know this is a booking bronco, but we're making progress.
Thank you so much. Talking of booking broncos.
This was the easy one.
This was the easy.
This was the easy one. Okay. Okay, so we're only a half hour off.
We didn't have the facilities plan.
That was probably what you left.
Now?
But when you're helpful, you're really helpful. And when you're not.
I'm helping in the other direction you want.
Well, but you're going to make, if you're not. I don't know which way you're going. But anyhow, clearly, there's something in your mind that I don't see where you're headed with.
Well, yes, there is something out there that three of us know, but the rest of you don't. So we can't talk about it. There's a really great option.
Why can't you talk about it? Okay. Okay. We are going to do this as efficiently as we are without.
I've already heard everything.
You've been on the process, because Lisa helped me.
From our perspective.
They're going to rattle through for like two-minute presentations.
If this computer doesn't do anything, we don't have a clicker, do we?
Are you ready to go?
Okay. Yes, we are ready.
Great. I think Phil Kleiser is going to start.
Yeah, sure. I can go ahead and get started while our team is pulling up the slides, unless they need just a moment, if you don't mind.
We were having a moment. We'll go back to having one.
Put it on the desktop.
Oh. Maybe minimize.
I know.
So while that's happening, Phil Kleiser with the City of Boulder Planning Department, thank you very much for your time this evening. The purpose of this agenda item is to update council on several, several aspects of a project relating to the University of Colorado Boulder's South Campus, or CU South. And the purpose of tonight is to not only provide you with that update, but also get some clarification and some direction from council around some next steps in the project. You may recall that originally, this project was scheduled for a briefer, relatively short update from the Process Committee. But since recently, there's been, you know, the letter from the university, as well as some negotiations and discussions with the Colorado Department of Transportation, or CDOT. And so council, with that in mind, thought it would be a good idea to go ahead and have a broader conversation on the topic this evening. The presentation tonight will be fairly brief, about 12 slides. I'll give a brief update on the annexation application. Douglas Sullivan with Utilities Division will bring you up to speed on the preliminary Douglas Sullivan with Utilities Division will bring you up to speed on the preliminary engineering happening on the site relating to the city's flood mitigation efforts. Kathleen Brackey from the Transportation Department will go over some of the highlights of the CDOT discussions that recently took place. And lastly, Dan Burke with Open Space and Mountain Parks Department will provide council with some important considerations that you'll want to keep in mind as we move forward in the project. So the bulk of the conversation, we would anticipate, being a council discussion. And the two things that those will likely focus on would be, first, the approach for the upcoming meetings. And so CAC yesterday suggested that council add an item on the July 16 council meeting to direct staff on key, some key issues around this project such as the flood mitigation concept. And then depending on the outcome of that meeting, council may be in a position to then have a discussion with the university on August 13 during a study session. Also wanted to point out that the university is in attendance tonight, and we appreciate them for being here. The second part of this discussion will likely be, basically, what information does council need in order to direct staff at that July 16 meeting? And so the Process Subcommittee for this project suggested that perhaps it would be a good idea tonight to have some discussions around variables or parameters that you'd want to discuss in that July meeting, such as design storm considerations, land uses, and so on. So a brief update about the annexation application. As you know, the university submitted an annexation application for their 300-acre site in South Boulder in February. City staff responded in March. And the staff, initial staff comments really included two parts. One was a fairly lengthy term sheet that included both the university and the city's position on a number of issues as well as whether or not we were aligned. And we kind of used the green, yellow, red language in that term sheet. And the second thing was that staff pulled out six issues that we called key issues that we thought, relative to the other things, will likely require more staff time and resources in order to resolve. And so where are we now with the annexation application? Per the university's letter on May 20 and a subsequent discussion with university officials, we do, we did get an indication that the larger amount, number of items on the term sheet are likely ones that we'll be able to work through throughout this process. At this point, we're not seeing fatal flaws in, on those items. Of the six items that were pulled out as part of those key issues in the city's cover letter back to the university, half of those, which are listed here as analysis needed, are really, we need to do more analysis, we need to do engagement and have more discussions before we're able to really make a call on whether or not we're on the same page with the university. And then the other three relate, two of them relate to impacts from the city's flood mitigation needs for the site relating to planned uses for university housing, sports fields, and the existing tennis courts, as well as a concept that staff put forward in terms of regards to a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. So council established the Process Committee, the CU South Process Committee, in which council member Carlisle and Yates, thank you very much for your time thus far, are the members. That was established in early March, and since then, the Process Committee has been hard at work and has met three times. The Process Committee is generally looking at, looking forward at a plan and strategy for how we will engage the community about this project, as well as how we schedule and format meetings like tonight. And moving forward, they've gotten probably over a third of the way through an engagement plan, the whole, the whole plan of which would be presented to council later this year. You'll likely also remember this diagram from a meeting that you had on March 5. The reason we have it on the slides this evening is just to reemphasize the council and the community that, you know, these have been discussions that council has had of wanting to ensure that the annexation process, negotiations with CDOT, as well as the preliminary design are happening concurrently, and so that one process doesn't delay the other. So we just wanted to reemphasize that we're still intending to move along on that track. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Douglas Sullivan for an update on the preliminary engineering piece.
Okay, thanks, Phil. As Phil noted, you guys saw this diagram at the March 5, 2019 meeting. And the purpose of this was sort of a reset to show you the long view of what was, what would be entailed with a project of this magnitude. So the three bars on the left are the critical ones for where we are, and we showed a 15-month duration going through Q2, halfway through 2020, with the three bars that we talked about, the CU South annexation piece, the CDOT negotiations, and the preliminary design. So following council direction on February 5 of 2019, utility staff did move forward with a scope of work with our engineering consultant, and we got them under contract and had that finalized, and we have begun work to that end. And so I have very few slides here tonight, but we can answer some questions and talk about where we are. So if you think about the preliminary design component, it really comes into thirds. And so there is the geotechnical investigation that we spoke about, which is about a quarter of the project. I say thirds because there are three major elements to the preliminary design for the next 15 months. You'll see my little bullet down below, all other tasks for which there are about six or seven comprise the other 20%. So I've shown in blue that two of these are moving ahead in 2019. The preliminary design documents shown in red is the more significant, what we would call, technical specifications and drawings. And so that would follow in 2020. So at this point, there were some questions about, could we continue to proceed? The answer is yes. And are any of those elements sunk cost at this point? For the first two, the answer is no. So I would say comfortably, we have a six-to-nine-month window with which to move forward with respect to critical engineering elements that would be necessary for any of the options, regardless what the terminology or variant names were. If there are not any questions here, if you want to come back, I'd like to turn the microphone over to Kathleen. She has been the primary contact on the CDOT negotiations and has played a vital role as not just the Go Boulder manager, but the interim co-director of Transportation.
Wait a second. Yep? And I do have a question for you, Douglas.
Okay.
Thank you. If I understood you correctly in saying that we have about, you said, six to nine months of the engineering work to do regardless of what option would have been picked. Earlier in the evening, we heard from one person during open comments saying that we've lost 10 months of time. So if I heard you correctly, has there been any time lost based on...
Yeah, I think what's probably confusing is we tend to use certain terminologies for the various stages. And up until February 5, we have been in a lengthy alternatives analysis phase where we were looking at an extensive number of options to get to a point looking for council direction to proceed. So preliminary design is a relatively defined component in engineering. It typically represents what's called a 30% design, all right? And if we go back to the bars there, that's what we're trying to do in the next 15 months. After that is the final design. So it's a little presumptuous to say that we've lost time or that we could have gotten here before because all those steps were necessary to get to this point. Now, for example, there was a lot of groundwater and subsurface investigation done in the alternatives analysis site to determine whether the site would be acceptable. The answer is yes. There is additional groundwater investigations, and that's shown in this first bullet that are part of the preliminary design.
Thank you.
Let's ask a follow-up. So part of the process in the last, however long it's been, eight months or nine months or something, is we've been exploring different possibilities. Like you came back to us some months ago, say, because we'd looked at a deeper detention area, right? And so you all analyzed the deeper detention area possibility. You came back, you said, "Well, we could do it, but it's," I forget how many, $30 million extra dollars or whatever it was. And we said, "Oh, no, that's too expensive." So, you know, go look at this other thing, right? So you all spent a certain amount of time exploring those kinds of alternatives. If we had settled on one alternative earlier, what would you have been doing during that time period instead?
So the elements that you see up there on the board are the ones that I would define as the critical pieces to get to a 30%, what's called a preliminary design report. And to back into it, that last component, which is the most technical of this element, is the red, and we can feel comfortable waiting on that because there's so much work with a, with a project of this magnitude that has to be done first. So regardless of the option that was selected, so much of the work is site-specific to find out whether it can actually be done. And so that is analogous and correct across all of the options.
So you've been doing that all along?
That was part of the, as I mentioned before, and I have one slide if you wanted to see it, in terms of the actual number of wells, for example. There were 26 wells that have been drilled to date. Those serve two purposes. There's the purpose of the soil, there's the purpose of how the groundwater moves. There are permits required, whether it's with open space, whether it's with CDOT, you know, whether it's with CU. All that was secured as part of the previous phase. There will be additional components now that will basically look at the subsurface conditions to whether it can actually handle a wall of this size.
So thank you for that. So I get about how the geotechnical studies are moving forward. I didn't quite get an answer to the question that I asked, which was that if we had, if we had had an answer eight months ago that was kind of technically feasible and agreeable to all parties, what would you all have been doing instead of analyzing the sort of alternatives?
So had we had an answer that early, then the preliminary design would have followed immediately in the same way that it's doing now. It took about four to six weeks to develop the scope for a project of this size, and then we pushed it through purchasing as quickly as we could. So that would follow that analysis phase. So if that was completed six months before, we would be six months ahead of where we are now.
Thank you.
Yep. But had we heard from CDOT at that point? I don't think so.
Well, CDOT is just one of a number of components here.
No, I know that, but it's, my question is, we've been using the bridge. And so their bridge, and so we hadn't met with CDOT until just recently, correct?
So, no, I mean, there were meetings with CDOT extensively over a number of years. I think what came out of it was the level of confidence in terms of how far we were along in terms of what we agreed to.
Okay.
Right, so we've been having conversations with CDOT, Kathleen Brackey, Transportation. And we've been having conversations with CDOT over a long period of time. We've had the most recent conversations with them since beginning of this year.
Right.
And so I can, I can...
Yeah, that would be helpful.
If you have other questions for...
Well, we probably will, but why don't you go ahead?
All right, we'll move along. I just want to provide an update. Again, we've had ongoing conversations, but we had the most recent meeting with CDOT last week. And I want to say how positive and productive that meeting was, and we really appreciate them being here and coming forward to help work with us to solve these ideas and these options. They're all complex and they all have trade-offs. And I want to give special thanks to the new executive director at CDOT, Shoshana Lou. She really has been instrumental in helping to come to the table and be willing to roll up their sleeves and look at ideas and options with us. So the meeting that we held last week was really to look at options for where could, and again, at a high conceptual level, but where could we align the flood mitigation wall along the CDOT right-of-way? Earlier this year, CDOT staff had indicated that they wanted that wall located outside of their future right-of-way that had been identified as part of the US 36 environmental impact statement. So that would have been much farther away from the highway. At the meeting last week, CDOT supported putting the wall along the existing right-of-way line. So that was a really big step forward and very helpful guidance for them to provide to the staff and the project team working on that. They do recognize that by locating the wall along the existing right-of-way line, that the portions of the wall that are underground, the foundational elements, would need to extend into their existing right-of-way. So between the wall and the highway, just in terms of how the wall would need to be built. So those were, that was kind of the big part of the conversation, to focus on where we could locate the wall along the highway. We also talked about the bridge...
Can we just pause and say that that was a big give on behalf of CDOT?
Yes.
And it was, yeah, I don't think we can be thankful enough for their willingness to say, "Okay, we'll let go of our ambitions about what might happen in the future right-of-way, about if we ever wanted to realign the highway, and we will forego that." So it was significant.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, and really appreciate your help and the team's help to get to that point. It was a big step forward. CDOT did express concerns, though, with any of the designs that would affect their bridge infrastructure over US 36. So there were different designs that would be different either attached or close to the bridge, and they did not feel comfortable with those designs. So again, they were very helpful regarding the alignment of the wall, but did not feel comfortable with something that would impact their existing bridge. Again, as we're talking tonight, there's a lot of additional technical work that needs to go on with all of the stakeholders, with the city, with all the city departments, including Open Space, with CU, and with CDOT. So we want to continue that technical work and moving forward, but this guidance was very helpful.
Are you guys going to show the right-of-way line as it relates to the bridge or not? Just because there was, it keeps coming up.
Right, so we have exhibits that show, we have the CDOT exhibit that shows the existing and future right-of-way, correct?
Well, yeah.
You're asking specifically at the bridge?
Well, yeah. Should we just tackle the bridge thing? Because there's a level of detail that some people are aware of and different opinions, and we might as well air that, yeah? No?
Either that or we've got, I would say, three more minutes left of presentation.
Oh, okay.
And then we could go to back...
I just thought it was useful to look at the map. We can do that in a minute.
Okay, great. Well, I'll turn it over to Dan then to cover the...
Oh, we got a question for you.
Sure.
Kathleen, on your third bullet there, you say CDOT was not supportive of modifications to the existing US 36 bridge. That is also known as the variant two option, correct? That would have been that one?
Right, but they didn't, I want to be clear that they didn't look at the entire, that entire alternative. They were just talking specifically about how that alternative would relate to their existing bridge.
Exactly. But that existing bridge, I just have to say this because that existing bridge was the whole thrust, as it were, of variant two.
So we'll look at that in a minute.
We can look at, but I...
And that will explain, that will explain that better in a minute.
Great, thanks. Well, I'll turn it over to Dan then to cover the Open Space.
Good evening. Dan Burke, interim director, Open Space and Mountain Parks. Just want to preference to say that while, you know, it's really important that we do have a much better understanding of where CDOT stands and their position, what we have learned does represent a pretty significant departure from the understanding and the assumptions that there would be no flood structures located in open-spaced lands. And again, that is, from an open-space perspective, that is a bit of a deviation from what, what the understandings have been to date. And so the latest discussions with CDOTs, you know, has negated this assumption, and it basically has put the disposal of open-spaced lands back on the table. So just want to bring that up as a very, potentially significant matter, and I'll just spend a couple of minutes talking a little bit about disposals. But back in 2014, there was an option that was looked at for a flood structure on open-spaced lands. And because of the disposal issue in the lands that were involved at that time, and through feedback from the Board of Trustees, council decided to look at other alternatives that would avoid a disposal situation. In 2015, after considering several alternatives, the option D was selected in part because it did not require a disposal of open-spaced lands. And I just want to set this context because one of the most, you know, one of the reasons for avoiding direct impacts to open-spaced lands in this particular location is because of the high-quality habitat that's involved in this area. It is within the South Boulder Creek State Natural Area, which is the state of Colorado's recognition of some of the best high-quality habitats that remain in the state. In this particular state natural area, it's because of Remnant Tall Grass Prairie, the populations of Lady Truss's Orchid, Pebbles Jumping, Metal Jumping Mouse. It's also habitat for very significant and high-quality wetlands. So those are some of the reasons why, up to this point, we've been trying to avoid direct impacts from flood structures on, on open-spaced lands. But what we're learning from CDOT is that, in this case, that may not be, we may not be able to avoid that. And in this case, if there are direct impacts to open-spaced lands in this situation because flood structures would be located on our lands, then it would, it's staff's opinion that it would amount to an open-space disposal situation. And City Charter, Section 176, provides us with guidance for, and Section 177 regulates the disposal of open-spaced lands and lays out a process for how the disposal of lands would take place. And basically, there's three, there's three steps involved. Disposal of land... Yes, go ahead, Tom.
This is a little premature. We haven't, so disposal is this process. Council decides whether a particular use of open-spaced land is an open-space purpose. Open-space purpose includes preventing stuff from cloaching on front plains. That's a discussion we haven't had yet. We've been analyzing this in our office. I'm surprised that we're talking about disposal. That's the next step. The step before this is you deciding whether or not this is an appropriate use for open space. This land still belongs to the city, and you could construe the charter to say that this was appropriate. But we are way down that, way, long way away from making a disposal decision or deciding whether or not you have to activate the charter. So, and this is a problem we've had with, the Open Space Board gets to decide whether or not something is a disposal, can be disposed. The council decides whether or not a disposal is necessary. And so since you haven't made that decision, the Open Space Board can't take that away from you. Now, I'm not suggesting which way that decision would go. I'm just suggesting that this particular discussion is a little premature for deciding whether or not flood management is an open-space purpose.
Can we just clarify this?
Yeah.
We would decide whether we want to ask the Open Space Board about disposal?
Whether it's an open-space purpose to use open-spaced land for flood management.
Oh, so we could say, "Hey, we're going to build this on open space, but we think that falls under the uses of open space, so it's not a disposal." That's what you're saying?
That's a possibility.
That's a possibility. Okay. All right, so that's interesting, though.
That was muddled.
Yes.
But can you, can you quantify the impacts? Were you going to get to that in another slide?
Nope, I was just going to wrap it up, just to let you know that with flood structures, there's a possibility that the disposal situation would arise. And Tom is right that that would be a council decision and analyzing if the disposal situation does come up. We did thoroughly look at this situation last year when the OSPT made recommendations to you and did consult with CAO Office, and there's a possibility that the disposal situation's on the table. So just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Can I just say, if we had the right-of-way slide, which I think we do, it will help to illustrate... help to illustrate the question you're asking about impacts? About impacts?
Okay, yeah. Do we have that slide?
Well, I guess we need to let them finish their conceptual, and then we're gonna-
So we'll come back to that.
Yeah. So maybe, was there anything else you wanted to say? I guess that I-
I was just going to say that we have cleared off some agenda items on our July 10th OSPT meeting. If the council would like to ask any considerations or information back from the board, that we'd be saving some time in our agenda to provide you any information that you may seek at this time.
Although it looks like our next meeting on this might be the 16th. But, okay. But thank you for that offer. We may have to think about timing. Is that the last slide of the presentation?
Yeah, I was gonna turn things over to Phil at this point.
Because I really do think, no.
Yep. That's really just coming back full circle to council's discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Can you guys put up the right of way slide?
Phil, I may need a hand here. I know you included a ton in the-
I want Suzanne, while we're waiting, can we have some more clarification? I'm confused by what the city manager said about who's, Baileywick, sorry, city attorney, said about who's Baileywick it falls into to make a decision about disposal of open spaceland, according to our charter. So-
I didn't say who makes, so the decision on open space is a joint decision between council and OSPT. Both, to dispose of open spaceland, both, the OSPT and council have to agree to do it.
Well, so who agrees first on that, is my question.
Hang on.
My comment wasn't about the disposal. It's about who decides what an open space purpose is. So this, this came up about five, six years ago, and we drafted an ordinance to sort of make it clear, but everybody agreed that it's council's prerogative to decide what's a legitimate open space purpose. So the charter says what those purposes are, and then there is some ambiguity. And so one of the open space purposes is utilization of land to prevent encroachment on floodplains. Now, I'm not sure exactly what that means, but you're the ones who get to interpret that. And so we've had situations before where OSPT jumps to, this is a disposal, so it's, we're gonna say no, and then council can't do it. It's important to remember that it's council's prerogative to decide what's an open space purpose, and then if something doesn't fit an open space purpose, whether the land then has to be disposed. And so that's the point I was making.
Well, with all due respect, I totally disagree with you. I mean, I think that that lies with the open space board of trustees, according to the charter.
No. Disposal lies with them. Interpretation of what's a purpose lies with you.
Well, then we could just make up purposes if we agreed what it was, and-
No, the purposes are in the charter.
To the extent that there's interpretation.
This has come up most frequently in the question of what constitutes passive recreation. Passive recreation is an open space purpose, and we have gone back and forth on what that term means. You get to interpret it.
Okay. So we're not going to resolve that tonight?
No, but it says in the charter what passive recreation is, with a couple of exceptions.
Okay. So I think this is a larger thing. We've opened up a little bit of a can of worms, and we can all think about that. But the thing we want to do is update ourselves on what's, what we know, what we learned, and give directions for our next meeting and what we want staff. So I'll just say, sitting in this meeting, you're very good at explaining things, to explain what the lines are on the map, what it would take to build a flood wall in terms of the encroachments either way, and whoever wants to do it. But I just meant, you explained it at the meeting.
So at the city CDOT meeting, this was a slide that the CDOT staff brought, and they basically showed a couple of different options. Now, these options have nothing to do with our terminology for any of the variants. And in a nutshell, they were trying, so if you look at the red line that you see there, all right, so this is the, this is the CU South property on the west side and open space on the east, all right? And the red line represents what they called their future EIS. And that's what Kathleen had explained at different times, was a potential option where they would develop, you know, more comprehensively than what's there. The yellow line, albeit it's hard to see, is their existing CDOT right of way. So there were two things that came out of that meeting, you know? There was not a lot, do you want to handle this one?
No, go for it. I'll just answer questions.
So what we tried to do in the meeting following with the subcommittee meeting was do a combination of this and then a sketch to show you what was at stake in terms of how narrow the section is between open space and between CDOT. And it sort of depicts, you know, the movement that CDOT did in the meeting.
And so what they gave up was the red line, and I just wanted to show that's pretty significant. So they said we can work with the yellow line. Okay? So that's the part A. That was very, that was progress.
So the yellow line is CDOT's existing right of way. And as Kathleen noted, prior conversations, it said they did not want any city or flood infrastructure inside their right of way. The compromise that they came forward with is that they did not want the wall in their right of way. However, the wall will likely be a vertical concrete wall with a huge horizontal section called a foundation, and they were comfortable with that foundation extending into CDOT right of way as long as it was buried, and then may in fact have a bike path on top of that. Their fundamental concern was to maintain, was maintenance for the US 36 corridor, and they felt, my understanding was, that they could continue to do that on a bike path and as long as they had, if our structure was buried on the CDOT side.
And I think the cross section was helpful. Do you have a slide on that?
We do have it. Would you like to see that?
I think so, just so everybody has the same visual.
Yep.
So I would like to explain one thing here. This is not an engineering drawing. This is a sketch.
Couldn't tell.
I am the author, okay? And there's a lot of color here. The point of this was to give you a visual of what's at stake. So what you're looking at on the right-hand side, if you were driving into Boulder from Louisville, that is the median on the right, the two black things are the eastbound line, so coming out of Boulder, then the dotted line approximately shows the CDOT right of way, which varies between 40 and 50 feet. The orange structure is a very large depiction of potentially what a wall would look like. It's called a T-wall, and it would have a vertical section, it would have a horizontal, and the two major pieces coming down are called caissons. Those are drilled down into bedrock, which provide the stability. I'm not going to do a bunch of engineering talk, but one thing is important here that differentiates it from the flood berm. You heard about the 100-year, you've heard about the 500. Regardless where we land in terms of the storage, this is considered a high hazard flood structure, which means people live below it, and there are certain safety provisions which are required. There is something called the PMF, the probable maximum flood. It is eight to 10 times what the 100-year flood is. It is the full disaster. This structure needs to be built such that it can be overtopped. So picture a cascading waterfall over the top of this in a worst-case condition, and the water that drops on the downstream side cannot erode the foundation, thus it cannot fail. So when you look at what is a beefy concrete structure, whether it has rock and riprop and other things like that on the side, that's why what you're looking at. So getting back to it, the purple vertical line is CDOT, is the right of way. And what they effectively said, they don't want the vertical wall in their right of way. They're comfortable with the right side of the orange, both the caisson and this horizontal foundation being there. That's what you're looking at.
And then just explain the bike path part.
So the bike path, what came up in conversation is it could be on either side of the wall, but they were comfortable with it being on the CDOT side in their right of way. And although it's not shown to scale, I think the standard for multi-use path in Boulder, I think, is 12 feet. And it would obviously be probably eight inches thick. I'm just engineering talk because it would handle plows and pickup trucks to clean it.
How does this structure relate to the existing bridge, or does it? Okay, we haven't gotten to the bridge part. This is just the flood wall part.
The important piece here, Elise, is regardless where we land on any option, this piece is the commonality. You saw a lot of different drawings over a number of years, and there was an earthen foundation with a gentle slope on each side and a big top, all right? And then this vertical structure is the same for all of the options, for the reason I explained, because it represents a high hazard dam.
So a couple of questions here, if I may. So when you say the bike path could be on either side, but it would only be on their right of way if it is on the right-hand side in this structure, right?
That's correct, as it's shown here.
Otherwise, it'd be an open space.
Right, yeah. So clearly, so it's fine. We want it on that side, clearly. So then, what I was asking about before is in terms of quantifying the impact on open space. So what is the width of that structure that would end up being in, in open space territory?
So again, take this with a grain of salt, because we're not even in preliminary design. Early estimates with the designers, I've shown a 20 to 30-foot window on each side. So there would be a permanent and a temporary impact on the open space side. What you see in the first 20 to 30 feet left of the wall is a permanent impact. There would likely be a caisson and the foundation wall on that side. It could be buried, so it looked natural. To build this, we would then need a 40 to 50, 40 to 60-foot section. So it's a significant amount. This wall is on the order of 20 to 25 feet tall, depending upon where we would end up in the design. So again, permanent and temporary disturbance.
And so the permanent disturbance, when you talk about that 20 to 30 feet, it would potentially be buried.
Yes.
But it's permanent impact because you no longer have soil going down indefinitely.
You could have soil on top of it, but you then get into the O and M. The operation is in maintenance space. And for a structure of this site, from engineering side, you would have maintenance typically on both sides. So you might have some sort of, some sort of gravel road or two-track on the left side.
And what about the temporary impacts?
Temporary could be restored to as-is or previous conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Suzanne.
Great. And what is-
I just want to point out that as-is for a wet meadow of this quality, you could restore it to a natural condition, but probably not bring it back to the wet meadow condition it's in now. Just want to clarify that.
But can I just-
Yeah.
So one last bit of information I think we need here to quantify the impact is how, I know it's not open space along the entire wall, right? So how, what's the linear distance of the wall on open space?
So I have some numbers for you. Entire length of the wall is about 2,600 feet.
Okay.
Okay? 2,400 of that is on open space and just 200 on CU. So if you go 20 feet times about 2,400, it's just over an acre of permanent disturbance. The temporary disturbance, Sam, would be on the order of three to four acres.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And just for context, how much open space land is there to the south of 36 and around the South Boulder Creek? How many acres of open space total is?
I would have to defer to Dan or someone for that one.
How much potential is impacted?
No, no. He gave us that number. He said an acre or so would be permanently impacted and temporarily would be up to three acres. So my question is, out of how many total open space acres in the South Boulder Creek watershed?
Oh, boy. We have continue, hundreds, thousands of continuous acres off of this. I could tell you that there's over 1,000 acres alone in the South Boulder Creek State Natural Area. And this is the epicenter or the heart of that. So you're talking about at least 1,100 acres in that state natural area alone.
I see. So it would be about one acre out of 1,100 that would be permanently impacted, and then three acres out of the 1,100 that would be on and off impacted? Does that sound right?
When you say on and off, a temporary construction is typically just at the time of construction.
But you did talk about needing access.
And that would be on the permanent. That would be-
That's a permanent. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So I would like to hear Dan talk about the impact on the wet meadows. And given that the drilling, the geotechnical work, if that's the correct terminology for it, hasn't been finished, we don't even know how those, what's going to happen with the water tables going off and on. So maybe you, I mean, over time. So in terms of this being an impact and it being a permanent one, we don't know whether or not going this far into OSMP, it's going to be permanent, how far back in terms of this state natural area? Is that a correct assumption?
Well, so the two issues that I heard is, one is, what is the, there could be potential groundwater disruptions. We talked about that a lot last year with any of, with any of the variants.
Right.
Right. This presents a disruption that we were not considering before last year. So this is a brand-new situation that we haven't really considered as a staff as of yet. But-
But can I ask about that? Because I guess, what did you think was going to happen? Because even if they let us go into their right of way a bit, that's a big, under, I mean, the 20 to 30 feet on either side, like surely we didn't think we were going to build it right next to the highway? Right? I mean, why, do we think that we were going to get a better outcome than this? I guess that's what I'm saying, because I was like, wow, I'm glad we got as good as we got. But, yeah, what was the best we had hoped for to ease into their maintenance lane?
Well, the variants that we were considering as a department, as a board, all had no structures on open space.
That's right.
So-
Well, I know, but so, so where would they have been? I meant-
I think it was envisioned that they would be within the right of way.
That's what we said.
Yeah, but, okay. But we were, okay.
But we hadn't, we didn't know that until just last-
Well, I know, but either way, 30 feet was going to be underground, and I'm just saying, that was an unreasonable expectation, given how much has to be underground, that we could move in that far into their right of way.
Because it's only 40 to 50 feet.
I meant, you're going to hit highway, if, you know what I meant? I guess I'm just-
Well, these are the kinds of things that I would have hoped that we would have gotten from the engineering perspective, so that we could have had some kind of reasonable talk about that at the time, in terms of what the expectations were.
Well, I'm just, yeah, we're all learning, we're learning stuff now, but I'm just-
We are learning. But I mean, this goes back to, how long is this, I mean, all of this stuff started before I got on this council. We've spent, how much money?
Okay, okay.
How much staff time? And are the assumptions we're making now even correct, given how off they've been prior to this?
Okay.
I mean, you know, that's, I think that's a fair question. Because we're given a whole new scenario now, again. So-
Aaron.
So all of our current approaches that we're contemplating involve this requirement, right? If we were to decide for some reason that this wasn't feasible or doable, what would we have to do differently?
When you say if this wasn't doable, do you-
So basically, impinging on open space.
The flood detention facility on the South-
Well, let me put it this way. Let's, if the open space board felt like this wasn't okay, and they said no, then what would we have to do differently in order to get flood detention?
So the purpose of this drawing very clearly was to show what was open space on the left and what was CDOT. So if there's not the ability to build something that is somewhere between 40 and 60 feet wide, because there is no property or give from either side, you have to look at a very, very different configuration. And so we do flood mitigation in lots of different ways throughout the community. Sometimes we're buying homes in the high hazard zone. Sometimes, you know, we would relocate a facility. You know, predated my role here, but there was analysis on the west side of 93 at one time. So if it was a deal breaker, for example, you're looking at a whole different level of alternatives analysis, if the goal is not to approach a detention facility on the CU South campus.
Well, are you saying that you, that this is required, doing this is required to have a detention facility on the CU South property?
Because people live downstream, and there is that-
I just need a yes or no.
The answer is yes.
Yeah. So in order to do flood detention in this area, we need this facility.
A high hazard dam structure, that is correct.
So we have to go back like 17 steps.
But Dan is trying to get, were you trying to say something?
No.
No, okay, good, yeah, go.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on Aaron's line of questioning. So wouldn't the engineering and the requirement of it being a high hazard dam and people living downstream, wouldn't that be the driving factor and not, I mean, that's the requirement? It is what it is. It's the requirement. So isn't that what would drive the design, not some other, I mean, what other factor?[1742.26] I mean, what other factor?
No, that's what I'm saying is, I guess if this is what has to happen...
Yeah, so, I mean, if that's what has to happen, then what are the things that would?
It's just apparently it's...
Not enable it? So that the caissons couldn't go in as far as they're needed to?
So the depth wouldn't be the issue. There is another configuration. This was just shown as one. There is also an I configuration that does not spread out as wide, but the concrete wall gets bigger, for example. Those are final design issues. Okay? The caissons are there regardless. You have to go into bedrock, which is where rock starts, and then you actually go in 20 feet, because there are different fractures in the rock and you need to get to some level of stability. There is a tremendous tipping moment on a dam. And so this is the size it is to make sure it withstands the worst-case scenario you could imagine. And when you build a detention facility, that is effectively what you are trying to
So, yep. So one of the previous options, we had an earthen berm, correct?
Yes, that's correctly.
And then, but it went, it was pretty wide.
Yes, it was.
And it didn't really have any caissons or any structure that went down. Is that correct?
Yes, they're very different. So if you look at the earlier drawing, scene of the entire flood wall in the northwest corner approaching the Table Mesa Park and Ride, that's all an earthen...
Right, right.
Whether there was access to CU transportation-wise, whether there was, you know, the bike path on there, that's a different element of the structure.
Maybe you can show the right-of-way thing again and maybe point that out. So that's still a part of the deal. It's just not, as you go south. Sorry, as you go. So maybe if you could point to where the earthen berm is and where this wall would be.
So CDOT did their best estimate. It's sort of near the curve of the highway. And we can always pull up one of the actual drawings that you would have seen before under one of a number of variants. So looking back on the left side of the drawing is the earthen berm piece. When you get along 36, you know, the light blue that you see there is the 2,600-foot-long vertical concrete wall.
You see that other color is the embankment, greenish up there? Yeah, the turquoise. Yeah. Okay, so while that sinks in, let's do the one more, which is the bridge thing. Do we have where the right-of-way comes out in front of the bridge?
Do we have that one, Phil?
Well, the one where they drew the 52 feet out one? Because that was also...
What did CDOT say about that?
Well, that's what they're going to tell us. It's just easier to show with the map. Okay, there. There was the map. Do we have the right-of-way map that was in the meeting?
I'm not sure, Suzanne, if we have that one.
You don't have that one?
Where it bumps out. We have the drawing depiction. I don't believe we have that.
I saw it the other day.
Yeah, I saw it the other day. Well, maybe we should just visually describe it, because to me that was very...
I can answer what the issue was. So CDOT made very clear in the meeting, they were not interested in any structure attached to the US-36 bridge, you know, reduction in size or otherwise. And so if one were to go in that direction, it leaves you an option. It has to be separated from the structure. And then the question becomes, how far is it separated from the structure? So CDOT still has some right-of-way off the bridge. So the question is, is it in their right-of-way there? Are they okay with that? Or if it's, or is it outside? If in fact it's outside, which is further south and further up the creek, then there are additional implications from an open space, mountain parks.
And what I thought I heard was, again, if you imagine the right-of-way line comes down along the highway, that when it gets to the creek by the bridge, it juts out. So it's 52 feet out from the bridge, okay? And so if we were going to stick to staying outside of the right-of-way, we'd have to build the wall 52 feet out from the bridge, if you can get that in your head. And then we also have the overtopping piece, which you can explain. Yeah? Does that make sense? So it would... Yeah, I need visuals. So it's really hard without the visuals. Well, the only reason it matters, and I'll just, you correct me if I am wrong, but they said it would have to be way back from the bridge, which puts it way back into open space. And you can imagine, we'd have to build some kind of cement wall out there and 52 feet out. And since it also has to prepare for being overtopped, you'd have to pave the streambed after that. That's at what point I said, okay, that's not going to happen. Near as I know this community, that is probably a nonstarter. That's what I took away from that, and that's a key element of variant two. All of you other people can, I know that we can engineer our way to it, but aesthetically and what it would do to open space seemed to me to be like, okay, that's not really an option then. Okay, that's what Suzanne Jones took away from that meeting. I'm happy for you guys to disagree or explain if you agree with that, but that was very telling to me.
Right, that's my understanding as well from the meeting, is what they said. So...
Are you nodding too? Okay.
Yep, all nods.
Okay. So to me, the implications was, okay, so variant two really isn't on the table. Our decision space is variations on variant one. And to me, that's helpful tonight to know, okay, we heard from CU, we know variant one is the right answer, or some, I should say, that quadrant, and we need to negotiate within that space. That's what I took away.
So, I mean, the way I think about it is, it'll be good to get away from these discussions of variants, because I just think of it as different locations of a spillway. And so we have the Veale Channel spillway version, which I believe Douglas you said is a tunnel that goes through the berm into Veale Channel, and that's the spillway. Or we were considering the, using South Boulder Creek itself as a spillway, and we've kind of heard that that's not probably practical. So we're back to Veale Channel being what transports the water away as the detention fills and then it drains, it's going to go through Veale Channel. And then I think our discussion can be around...
Can we just see? Are you tracking?
Is that correct?
I'll add one small clarification.
Sure.
So the variant one options, whether it was 100 or 500, involved a lot of pooling to the west. And picture sort of a high point in between two pools. A certain amount of water gets trapped to the west, which is why that tunnel is necessary under 36. So the vast majority, when this bathtub empties, goes under the CDOT bridge. The tunnel is necessary to drain the remaining component of water that is further west. That is the fundamental difference, which is why one had that tunnel and the other did not.
I see, okay.
Is that the West Valley overflow?
The West Valley overflow in general refers to the area up north.
Okay, so this is Dry Creek.
The areas that are inundated. So Veale Channel is one of the 15 drainage ways, and it contributes water back to South Boulder Creek downstream.
Okay.
So it would be taking a small percentage of the water.
I see. I just wonder if we could have a map up, just for back...
While we're talking. Yeah, it'd be good to have a visual.
Okay, so this is the variant one 500 concept. And everything in dark blue is the water. And you see this yellow outlet tunnel there. And so what I was explaining, don't forget, north is to the right, it's not up top. So everything at the top here, the water sort of gets stuck up there. And so it has to make it back in. So most of the water behind the concrete structure down at the bottom goes back through South Boulder Creek, the main part of the channel. But that little bit of water still needs to go back to the drainage way as well. So it goes through an outlet tunnel, and then the mechanism with which to get it back to South Boulder Creek is Veale Channel. That's why you saw the yellow tunnel in the one option, but not in the variant two option.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. So that's the update portion of the evening? Does that work for people? Okay. So then the direction you wanted, maybe we ought to put that slide up, is simply about meetings? And in preparation for those meetings, what else, is there anything we want to make sure that staff is looking at, given what we have learned? So I'll just go ahead and say, I think the recommendation is to have both meetings, given the importance of this issue. One is to further explore what this means, because we've heard from CU, we've still got some work to do, and then meet with CU in August. So I think the process committee is recommending we do both meetings. Does anybody disagree with that? Okay. Secondly, in order to prepare for July 16th, well, and in preparation for a discussion with CU on the 13th, what additional information? And you know what? Maybe you should tell us what, are you guys going to do something? What are you guys planning to do absent us telling you anything to keep moving forward on?
With respect to the preliminary design?
No, no, we got that.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that. I guess in terms of narrowing options and, are you waiting for us to tell you?
You know, I think at this point, we're sort of at an impasse as it relates to some, I think Bob wanted to make a comment here.
Well, I mean, we're down to numbers now, right? And so CU has made it pretty clear that they want 129 acres. And so I guess the question is, is are there, within variant one, or whatever we're going to call it now?
We can rename it at some point.
Within the plan, within the plan. Are there variations on the plan that still do flood mitigation, because that's our number-one priority? Are there variations that leave CU with, I mean, I think the bid asked right now is 129 acres is what they want and 99 acres is what they're getting, the buildable, right? Is there, are there variations on this plan that get closer to 129? And I don't know what those are. I don't know if that would involve reducing the 500-year flood protection to 400 years or 300 years, or it doesn't mean building on OSO land, or does it mean moving some boundaries around? I'm looking to you guys for that, but I'm just throwing those out there. Are there things you can do that still achieves flood mitigation of some sort?
Really high caliber.
Yeah, the highest caliber that we've been talking about, but achieves, gets CU closer to 129 buildable acres? That's the question, I think.
Don't answer that?
Don't answer it.
But that's what we would want to discuss on the 16th.
Is that, and is part of that also how we, I'm assuming that we're still protecting open space lands?
There's always an open space component to, yeah.
So that would be the component that I would be looking for. How are you going to do all of this and still...
Or, if you say it differently, understanding what the open space impact is, doesn't mean that we would do that. But in other words, these guys may come back and say, oh geez, we can give CU 129 buildable acres, but it affects 30 acres of open space. And we say, mm, but that's not something we're going to do.
And I guess I would just add, we made up, the way we drew lines on the map is what resulted in 129. There's not necessarily anything magical about 129. It's just the result of how we drew lines. So we might explore drawing lines differently. Some of those lands were OSO, some of them are open space, some of them are lands we want to see restored. So there's some play there, too.
It was also the 500-year floodplain consideration. So that affected how some of the lines got drawn, because our guiding principle was that we didn't want buildings in the 500-year floodplain.
Right. So I guess whoever we're looking at, those are the kind of things we'd want explored. Would you like more direction than that? Or ask us some questions?
Douglas can chime in. So I would not expect that we'd be able to do engineering analysis of different things by then. I also just want to make sure, we've provided a variety of options in the past, and I'm not sure to what extent we might just be revisiting some of those. So like, we did, I think, the smaller footprint 500, and it was the one that was the excessive excavation.
Right, don't...
I have the bookend there. In terms of potentially looking at incrementally small design storms, there's no magic number there. You know, so if we determine where a reasonable footprint was, we could optimize in that. And we could give you a couple of samples of what that might look like in different sizes, but there wouldn't be anything...
So the...
If Aaron wants in on this, and then you can go.
Thank you. So Jeff, I think the direction that they're being, asking for is, we have gone through some of this before, right? But I think, but discussions with CU did not work out, right? So I think we're having to go back a step, is my understanding of what we're talking about here, and say, well, what are the options to give CU what they're looking for within the variant one parameters? I think we probably do want to skip the really deep one that costs $30 million extra dollars, right? So that one probably don't want to talk over again. But the, hey, if you have a lesser design storm, if you go into the OSO land a little bit, if you give them, if you redraw the lines on the BVCP map, like, I think, I know we've gone over some of this before.
Yeah.
But let's talk it over again with the...
Yeah, I think that's it. And I mean, we're going to talk with CU, and I know you're sitting there. If you guys want to say anything, we'll ask you if you want to. But the other thing is, we also got new information about variant two, which is, ain't really an option, which I think also gives some information to CU. If, so if variant one is where we must play, then we all must, we all must take another look at where we can give, because flood mitigation is everybody's highest priority.
Absolutely.
So I'll just put that out there, too.
And so I think what we would probably be able to bring you is kind of the bookends we've talked about before, and give you a sense of where we might be able to wiggle within those. So probably not anything totally new, but to be able to go, here's kind of, we could squeeze here, we could squeeze here, and here are the pros and cons.
So the 500-year design storm determines a detention volume in this case, right? And so it's something like 70% more than the 100-year design storm was. It was some ballpark like that. So just tagging on what Aaron said, there's a continuum in there, right? And so it would be interesting to look at different volumes of detention and how much land that left for CU to be able to develop on. So rather than thinking of it as a 400, 300, 200-year storm, because I don't know that those are meaningful, it could just be a detention volume. And we could look at how much we'd be detaining versus the 500-year detention level and the 100-year detention level.
Jeff, let me pipe in here. Yeah, Sam, effectively what you're asking for is what I would call a sensitivity analysis.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
You have your 100 on one end, you have your 500 on the other. Whether you decided to cut up in pies, 2, 300, 4, whatever, is one way to do it and see what the inundation is. The other way to do that is look at what the inundation would be, and then you would estimate statistically what level of service that would meet, okay? To use Bob's example, you know, what does it leave from a buildable footprint? What is the impact on open space? It's a trade-off. It's what we're talking about here. If you would like a few data points in between the bookends that Jeff talks about, then we can do that.
Yeah, that's...
I think that's what I'm talking, Cindy.
So one of the things, while we're talking about Wiggle Room and looking at what we can do, I would ask the University of Colorado Boulder to also look at what it may be able to do. One of the things that we haven't heard are any definitive plans. And if CU was really caring about their faculty, staff, and students, they would be building, I say this as a former Regent, Amerita, they would be building on Grandview Terrace rather than down there. So I would like to see CU give a little bit of room here as well and be a good citizen and a good neighbor, as we have tried to be all along. The city and CU have tried to work their best together. But I would ask that you really see where we are in this process, and we have been trying to accommodate the university, and I would hope the university would see where they might be able to move a little bit as well.
So that is helpful, and maybe that's all we can give you tonight? Is that...
I have another question. This is probably more of a question for council than it is for staff. I think when we arrived at variant one, we said back then, several months ago, that we didn't want to build on or affect OSO land. Is that, do I, am I remembering that correctly, Sam?
My recollection is that we didn't want to have a major impact on OSO land, because the detention for the other variant would have largely impacted the whole.
Yeah, so thanks for that. So I guess the question is, does council still feel that strongly? In other words, if we had to, if something had to give here, right? Something had to give so we can get some more buildable acres to CU. And one was reducing the volume of detention, as Sam mentioned. Or the other was, well, we can still have the 500-year quality, but we're going to have to do some impact on OSO, not open space, but OSO. Is that an option you guys would like them to bring forward? We're not making a decision tonight, but is that another variable that you guys, sensitivity that you like to see? I'm not making this up, maybe...
But isn't that what you, your data points will show various levels of inundation?
Yeah, that they would do exactly that.
Okay, then maybe we're getting this.
The whole idea is we're looking at everybody given a little bit, and what will that look like?
Well, so actually, but I think the inundation is maybe a little bit different, because we're, I think we, one of our options for moving forward and negotiating with CU is digging a little bit in OSO, but it's also potentially, you know, saying to CU, well, you might be able to use some of it.
Use some of the OSO.
And I would like for the options to be on the table for this next discussion, because I think it's critical we move this project forward, so to the extent that we have different choices that we can work over at our next meeting, I think that's helpful.
I would say as many options as you can think of.
Well, variables, I think, along the spectrum.
Variables, knowing that our goals are A, flood mitigation, and B, to get CU closer to 129.
No, and it's also to minimize impacts of.
That's always overriding and everything.
Okay, well, I just wanted, we had to say all three.
So there's open space, and there's open space other.
Yes.
And so the open space other designation, one of the ways we designated that was the 500-year floodplain, right? And so at least on that side of the project, near the Earth and Birm that's in there now, we had intentionally designated it that way because it would be hit in a 500-year flood. So that's what makes it hard, because you then be saying, okay, it's okay, we're not going to follow the guiding principle, it's okay to build and put buildings there. And, you know, it's certainly not the recommendation of the Association of Floodplain Managers at this point.
No, I get that. I guess the trade-off is if we were going to inundate open space or do that, you know, which do we hate least?
Well, OSO, preferably to open space.
Or not cling to 129. Again, I think we should, we have to look at the trade-offs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I want to throw one more variable in, because we've introduced tonight the concept of having some impacts on open space. So we will probably not by that point have had a chance to revisit how we might need to acquire and rehabilitate OSO areas to provide a net positive benefit for open space. Because my assumption would be that if we did have temporary or permanent impacts, typically the way you get it mitigation is to go above and beyond the impact to have it be net positive. So we may, we may need to revisit what we would be seeking to acquire and restore in OSO.
Okay. Is that good enough for now? CU, did you want to say anything to us?
I think we're good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for being here. All right. What else?
I didn't hear an expectation on time, just to be clear. This is not something we could bring back in July. Now, the good news is we would continue with the preliminary design, and we would do these efforts in parallel. So the main project of the preliminary design would not stop or even slow down. We would add a scope of work to do what we're talking about here. But I don't want to promise something that we cannot deliver here.
Okay. You guys?
And Will, I think the intent was that we would figure out what we could bring back high enough level to have something then. And I think that, and you can throw a shoe if you need to, but I think we would try to figure out what we, so we will not have engineering design or detailed analysis, but I think we can give you some general information and kind of range, but it won't be, it won't be detailed data on that turnaround, I don't think.
Right, so just maybe a progress update on July 16th, like what you know already. And then, you know, I think council, CAC, would be willing to schedule time in to hear about this as you get results, so whether, another meeting in August, because I think it's of high concern, as Aaron says. It's great that we're not slowing down on the preliminary design and the geotechnical work, but we need to continue driving towards resolution on this. So I think, when you have it, let us know.
And we are just sensitive that we have, a number of times, turned things around really quick that weren't fully cooked, and they were taken as fully cooked, and it doesn't tend to help. So we will not like to bring you things that are, that haven't been fully vetted for discussion.
We appreciate that.
Can I, I mean, I appreciate that, and we don't, we don't want something presented as fully baked that is half-baked. But if we're not, if we don't have options to discuss in July, I don't know why we're having the meeting. You know, I mean, my understanding is that this July 16th meeting was for us to look at our, some more potential options and think about how we might be willing to move forward as a council.
Let me make two observations, a suggestion and observation. An observation is, is the process committee is meeting on July 8th, and we can accelerate that maybe a little bit if you need, so we can kind of maybe test drive that a little bit, and if the committee says it's not ready for prime time, we'll just pull the plug on it.
That's fine. But I do feel like we've seen most of this stuff already.
That's the other point I was going to make, is a lot of this stuff is redo, I mean, just go back in your files.
I think it's potentially giving you slides you've already seen.
Yeah, I think it's.
Or colder.
I think it's absolutely.
We can do that. If you actually want us to come back and say, well, how big is a 475-year pond? That's not.
Yeah, I think you guys have a lot of this work already.
I think the thing that's different is CDOT is narrowing our space so we know we're closer to where we have to be. And then within that, before, we could do a whole range of things, and now we're narrowing it. So it makes it a more meaningful discussion to look at the trade-offs as they're getting narrowed. And also, I think, knowing that the flood wall is going to have impacts, indeed, if that's, looks like where we're headed, then we also, I think that's new information about ONS, open space, and how do we address that? Okay. So do what you can, be in contact with us, you guys.
The realm.
No, I thought, the key point that Jeff made is this is between the goalposts, you know, it's interpolating between two known points.
Yes.
It's not outside.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, let's see, as you know, if it's not meaningful to have July 16th meeting. But I think we'll stick with our August 13th since we've, we're going to try to stick with both of them.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. This is really helpful. And I think, well, we'll just say to the public, we know how important moving forward on flood mitigation, and we've always felt that way, and we're going to keep doing it, so.
So we're five minutes ahead of schedule.
We're five minutes ahead of schedule. We have three short matters.
You go first.
Ish matters.
I don't know whose machine this is. It lives there.
I did what? Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. So this has been requested from a couple of different parties to join an amicus brief, a friend of the court brief in the Supreme Court. There are three very important cases that are coming, that the court is going to consider that address the question of whether Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits sex discrimination in the workplace, includes discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity. So we have been asked, because we joined the brief in the Masterpiece Cake Chop case, I would recommend that we lend our support. The brief is being drafted by the Public Rights Project, by the County of Santa Clara, and the City of San Francisco. I will, of course, review it and make sure that it doesn't, it's not inconsistent with the city's values. I don't expect it to be those, all those organizations do excellent work. So I would like council approval to join that brief.
Everybody in?
It is Pride Month.
It is, it is Pride Month. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, and absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, another real quick one is, I sent to you all a letter that I want to see if the entire council wanted to sign or individuals, if not the entire council wants. And it has to do with the shoddy job that, I'll back up. The Obama administration put a moratorium on the federal coal lease program, a moratorium on issuing new federal coal leases, and the Trump administration undid that. A court said, you have to do analysis first. So they took six weeks and then did an environmental assessment that found that there would be no climate impacts from restarting federal coal leasing.
Of course there were.
Who did that? And so this.
And gave 15 days to comment.
Yeah, and gave 15 days to comment, although they may end up changing that. So anyhow, I wanted to, this is in keeping with our climate agenda.
Absolutely.
So everybody, everybody's in? Okay, so.
The whole council.
The whole council. We'll figure out if they want to list us all, or however they want to do it.
I'm also happy for you just to send a letter on behalf of all of us. Is that mechanically easier?
We'll do whatever they, they want. Okay, great, thank you so much. All right, our third, go ahead, taking over the clerk's duties here.
Motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions and a process discussion.
Okay. So just to recap, how many of these do we have to make? Two, three?
Four.
There's six boards. Only this time you didn't give us handouts, okay.
Six, yeah.
So, okay, yes.
I have a question.
And then we are going to talk about the other ones. Okay. But here, are we considering also the transportation or whatever the other part of BJAD is? Traffic? Can you show us the other slide for that one? Okay, so it's the same. Okay. And then just to clarify, since we are still looking for someone to fill another seat on this board, but neither of them qualify?
They do not. They're not property owners.
I'm kind of done with the fact that we can't get people that want to serve, and maybe we need to revisit the criteria.
Well, I did ask them if they would be willing to seek out a property owner that would give them permission, and neither one of them wanted to take on that.
A question for Tom, or do we have to have two BJAD boards?
Yes.
And what would it take to not have two BJAD boards?
They, it's been a while since we did this. They have different responsibilities, they're in different organizations.
I understand that.
But we let them meet together, we came as close as we could to merge.
Could we pass, like, could we, through Fiat, change that?
No.
Is this a charter thing?
No, we tried to.
It comes under the condominium act. So it's how we created the Boulder Junction, we created a condominium with units, and these boards are part of it.
Okay, I have a different question. So we made it so they could meet at the same time and essentially just switch hats. Can we change the criteria in terms of resident versus?
I can advise you on that, I'd have to go back and look at the documents.
Okay, so, because I think that would be helpful.
Right now?
Yeah. Can we put one on one and one on the other?
There's two seats open on both, right?
No, there's only one seat.
There are two.
For resident, for resident. Okay, so we'd have the benefit of having them both present with their brilliant. Okay.
I nominate Sue for travel demand.
Okay.
And Ryan for parking.
Yep. Second.
I'm fine with that. Okay. Everybody's on board, we'll officially vote in a minute, okay?
Okay.
I'm going to vote.
Okay. Who would like to nominate?
I'd like to nominate Sherri Goff, I think.
Aaron?
I'll nominate Mark Gerwing.
Okay, those are the two. We'll close nominations. Can you all speak to your nominations? Whoever's prepared.
Well, I just, Mark Gerwing has served the city ably in the past, and I guess has a lot of experience with working on architectural issues in the city, so I think he would have to, make a knowledgeable member of this board.
Okay, Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, Sherri, Sherri is an architect as well, I guess they have to, I don't know if they have to be or not, but, and I just thought she interviewed well. I think actually, you know, they're all very good, but.
Okay. We didn't flip our coin.
When you're ready to vote, we'll flip.
Okay.
And I would say that she hasn't served on the board, so.
And she hasn't served on the board. Well, usually we straw poll it, and then we officially vote. I need to know which order to straw poll.
That's from the top.
It's a big coin.
Let's try. Which way are we going?
From the top, Mark Gerwing's first.
Okay, all those in favor of Mark Gerwing? One, two. All those for Sherri? Five.
Six.
Six. Okay. Next. We can get two of these? Yep, Sam?
I would nominate Daniel Teodoro.
I'll nominate Tom Klineau.
This is for the five-year term?
Yep, go ahead. Yep. So I spoke with Daniel yesterday, and, because he also applied to HAB and to OSBT, and asked him where he would rather serve. And he said wherever you guys think I would best fit. And I'll throw it out there, I think he would fit better in one of the other boards.
Let me ask a question. Do we have a rule against somebody serving on two boards?
Yes.
We do?
Yep.
Even for Urban Renewal, which doesn't meet? Because I've been the council liaison for three and a half years, and we have never met.
There's this provision in the charter that says that nobody can serve.
Really? Wow.
In that case, I'll withdraw the nomination, because he's got a wealth of experience in, was in Semin County, that he was working on.
So let me make a suggestion, then. Why don't I suggest that we, if you guys want to take Daniel off and put him on HAB, that we appoint Tom now, keep Urban Renewal one shy, and then, as I don't think anything's going to happen on Urban Renewal between now and February, and then we fill that spot in February.
Well, how about David?
Yeah, or put David on.
Put David on. Oh. I wasn't, I'm going to defer to you who are at the, at the interviews.
Well, he wasn't there.
Oh, okay.
So Tom did show up for.
Tom was great.
And he was very good, and he served, or he just finished five years on Prab, so I think he would be very good.
I think Tom would be right there.
Okay, why don't we vote on the five-year seat? Okay? We're starting from the, well, we have one nominee. Okay, so Tom, by acclamation to the five-year seat.
Okay.
Okay, so we can hold the other one open, or we can proceed? What is the will of council?
Well, David didn't show up for the interview, so I have no idea. And I actually, I thought, well, I'll just leave it there.
Yeah. I'd prefer to hold it open.
Okay, does anybody object?
Although, I just, I don't want to presuppose, I mean, I was very impressed by Daniel Teodoro, and I'm very willing to appoint him to a board, I just don't want to predetermine other board appointments coming.
That's why we'll leave this one.
Yeah, so, but I just want to put that out.
Yeah, so for example, if Daniel doesn't get appointed to HAB for some reason, he can presumably reapply to Bureau.
Yeah, okay.
Well, he would, we're holding it open.
That's what I'm saying. We'll hold it open, and then he can apply in February to Bureau.
Oh, oh, you're not going to do it till February.
Or we can do it sooner if we want to.
We could just put them on. We're going to have another slate.
Here's the other thing we could do.
Let's just hold this seat open until we vote on HAB and open space, we'll just.
And we can re-vote again.
Yeah. Okay. We have two openings and two, okay, so which one for?
I'd like to nominate Todd for the five-year. I had the pleasure of serving on Prab when Todd was the chair for a year or two, and he's just a fantastic leader, a fantastic chair. He's a professional mediator, and he's just the kind of calm, Matthew seemed like a great guy, too. I think they're going to be both great, they both have great skills, but Todd is just going to bring the leadership that I think that DAB could benefit from, and I think having him on for the full five years.
Does that work for folks?
Sure.
Okay. By acclamation, Todd for five years, and Matthew for two. Does that work?
And I'll just note that currently, if somebody steps out to go to the bathroom at a DAB meeting, they don't have a quorum. So it's really good that we're finally appointing.
That's what we did last week.
Okay, excellent. Next.
I'd like to nominate Zoe Polk.
I would like to nominate Susan Newsom.
Okay. We're going to close nominations, would you like to speak?
Sure, I mean, first of all, they're both great, I think we, this is one I wish we had two appointments on. I think I'd say about Zoe is, first of all, her family's been in business on Pearl Street in downtown for 50 years, exactly 50 years, it's pedestrian shops. Zoe's a young woman, I don't even think she's 30, and I think, we don't have that many opportunities to get young people on our boards, and I just would love to seize this opportunity to get a young person involved early on.
Lisa?
So Susan Newsom is also part of a longtime family here in Boulder.
The top, yes.
All those in favor of Susan? One, two, three. All those for Zoe? Two. Okay.
I would like to say, too, they were both really great applicants, and I hope Zoe re-appeals.
Yeah.
She was really great.
Totally. How does she feel about Boulder? No. Okay. All right. Next.
Oh, those are for later.
Next time.
Next discussion.
Okay. So--
Can you use a motion on this?
Well, we're going to do it at the end. Okay, in terms of process, who wants to sum up where we're at here? Yep, Mary.
So, I sent out a hotline post that basically summarized where we're at, but I will go over it. So, we have had recent resignations on the Housing Advisory Board and on the Environmental Advisory Board as well. And we will be having one on the Open Space Board of Trustees. So, Mayor Bai and I spoke, and we thought that -- and Heidi as well recommended or said that that's been how we do it in the past, correct, Heidi? That we appoint from previous applicant pool, with the exception, last year when we were looking for Housing Advisory Board, we needed a particular set of skills, and we opened it up. But in this case, I think that the applicants in the pools from earlier this year have the appropriate skills. So, we recommend that we pick from that pool and that we -- and this is something that I did not include in the hotline post, that we appoint in a couple of weeks. I think that makes it, gives us a little more time to revisit the applications and watch the videos, and it also provides staff some breathing room, so.
And with regard to open space, what did you find out about the date?
So, I exchanged an email with Andrea, and she said that she is planning on staying on through August 2nd. At that point is where the Open Space Board is pretty much done with any, having any impact on the master plan. So, and that's what she, what her goal was, to stay on until that point. So, we'll be getting a resignation sometime around that timeframe.
So, you're recommending we go ahead and appoint in anticipation?
Yes.
Okay. Just do it all--
From the existing pools. From the existing pool.
Did you have the existing pools?
They're -- she sent them last week. Heidi sent them to us.
I know they're in there.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you should put them up on the screen. Do you have them to put on the screen, Heidi? Just curious.
Oh, sorry, I did the wrong one.
Which is--
Oh, there you go. Okay.
So, there's the open space. And the star just means that I -- those are the people that have responded back to me. Or the star means actually, that's the only person I haven't heard back from. The rest would like to be considered.
Bennett? Okay, but we--
But I have more time.
Yeah, you have a little more time. Okay, can you go to the next one? HAB, and then EAB? Okay, so we just have a good -- that feel okay to people?
So, I have a quick question. Is Paul Cure -- does he live in the city? Yes. I've spoken with him. He confirmed.
I believe he does.